Good morning again, everybody.[19.11][19.11]19.11][S01] Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers. And welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, June 18th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. It is now just after 10:25 a.m., and we have six members present, four shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of special presentations and introductions scheduled. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Gruehl.
Thank you. My cheerleading team, headed by Tom Ramonch. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so pleased today to recognize students and mentors for the North Hollywood High School Science Bowl. And if I could ask all of the students from North Hollywood who are here to come up? Where are they? Come on up. Don't be shy. And Walter Seizel, all the individuals also from the Department of Water and Power, if you could, come on up. Colleagues, we've often heard of the many accomplishments of North Hollywood High, and particularly of their Science Bowl. The team this year placed fifth out of 64 teams in the U.S. Department of Energy's National Science Bowl on May 3rd of this year. The North Hollywood High School won the DWP Regional Science Bowl competition in February for the seventh year in a row. Also, the high school's B-team placed second at the DWP Science Bowl this year. The Science Bowl is a fast-paced game that shows style, format, and competition, requiring tremendous knowledge in math, science, technology, teamwork, and quick reflexes. Our local teams have been the best record at the National Science Bowl compared to any other region in the nation. I think that we should be very proud, and I hesitate to say that some of the questions you may have been asked, many of my colleagues might not be able to answer as well as myself. So hopefully you won't ask us to respond to any of those. But I'd like to also recognize the DWP and their many employees, in particular Walter Seizel, who has been working on this project for many, many years and taken a leadership role. We have proclamations for each of the students and for the DWP mentors, but I'd like to at least acknowledge them at this time. First, we have Team A, which is the group that placed fifth nationally. Steven Yao, who is the captain. Steven, give a great big round of applause for Steven. And I'll ask you to speak in just a minute, Steven, on behalf of all of your colleagues. Tanya Martin, Tanya is here. Paul Kim. Jensen Law. Sean Chancellor. And Len Soloff, the coach. Thank you, Len. For Team B, we have Jennifer Yeay.
Good morning again, everybody. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to council chambers, and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, June 18th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. It is now just after 10:25 a.m., and we have six members present, four shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of special presentations and introductions scheduled. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Gruehl.
Thank you. My cheerleading team, headed by Tom Labanze. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so pleased today to recognize students and mentors for the North Hollywood High School Science Bowl. And if I could ask all of the students from North Hollywood who are here to come up, where are they? Come on up, don't be shy. And Walter Seizel, all the individuals also from the Department of Water and Power, if you could, come on up. Colleagues, we've often heard of the many accomplishments of North Hollywood High, and particularly of their Science Bowl. The team this year placed fifth out of 64 teams in the U.S. Department of Energy's National Science Bowl on May 3rd of this year. The North Hollywood High School won the DWP Regional Science Bowl competition in February for the seventh year in a row. Also, the high school's B-team placed second at the DWP Science Bowl this year. The Science Bowl is a fast-paced game that shows style, format, and competition, requiring tremendous knowledge in math, science, technology, teamwork, and quick reflexes. Our local teams have been the best record at the National Science Bowl compared to any other region in the nation. I think that we should be very proud, and I hesitate to say that some of the questions you may have been asked, many of my colleagues might not be able to answer as well as myself. So hopefully, you won't ask us to respond to any of those. But I'd like to also recognize the DWP and their many employees, in particular Walter Seizel, who has been working on this project for many, many years and taken a leadership role. We have proclamations for each of the students and for the DWP mentors, but I'd like to at least acknowledge them at this time. First, we have Team A, which is the group that placed fifth nationally. Steven Yao, who is the captain. Steven, give a great big round of applause for Steven. And I'll ask you to speak in just a minute, Steven, on behalf of all of your colleagues. Tanya Martin, Tanya is here. Paul Kim. Jensen Law. Sean Chancellor. And Len Soloff, the coach. Thank you, Len. For Team B, we have Jennifer Ye, Clifford Shin, Sarah Moy, and Alex Yen. And Timothy Seiya could not be here today. Lastly, before I ask them to speak, I'd like to introduce all of the DWP employee leaders who really have served as mentors and have made this program possible. If we could, we have Melinda Rowe, Stephanie Bao, Gloria, Anna Kariko, Eddie Aranda, Jean Denisrin, George Doodles, Haddith Mendoza, Heidi Heroka, Kim Hughes, Albert Rodriguez, George Rofail, and of course Walter Seizel. Let's give them a great round of applause. I'd like to ask Steven Yao, who is the captain of the team, to say a few words, as well as Walter Seizel from North Hollywood and from the Department of Water and Power. Steven.
Thank you. It's been, I've spent four years, every year in high school on Science Bowl, and this is my last year, and it's really hard to say goodbye to all my team members. They're some of my greatest friends, and I know even when I am in New York, I'll be thinking of them, and I'll be back to visit many times. So I'd like to say thanks to everyone at the DWP, to our coach, Mr. Soloff, and to my teammates for working so hard and making this possible. Thank you.
I'd like to have their coach, Mr. Soloff, say just a few words.
I'd like to thank the City Council for honoring us. I want you to know how difficult a job this is trying to teach these kids. It's been my pleasure to be their coach, and I'm retiring, but I'm not going to retire from being their coach one more year. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Gruehl. It's a real pleasure for the department to be involved with Science Bowl in sort of a dual effort from both our corporate communications staff side, but also from our 12-member steering committee, many of whom are here today, plus 100 volunteers. I'd also like to mention that it's a real partnership. We have a number of community organizations that have joined with us in providing resources, either in-kind or financial funding going to the school district. These include employees from eight different groups at Hitachi, and they're matched by their foundation, plus the gas company, Nestle, City National Bank, the Water and Power Credit Union, Gelson's Markets, and of course, our partners in this, the L.A. Unified District. So hopefully, we'll look forward to doing the Science Bowl again in 2005. We have dates already scheduled for Science Bowl, February 26, I believe, 2005, the 13th annual event, so we look forward to putting it on again and hopefully recruiting more schools. This year, there were 42 teams from 25 schools that participated locally. As Councilmember Gruehl mentioned, our North Hollywood team won for the seventh year in a row. The other thing that occurred this year at the Nationals was that North Hollywood also, in the preliminary Round Robin league play, beat the three-time national championship team, Thomas Jefferson High School of Alexandria, Virginia, that won the Nationals three years in a row, and they beat them pretty soundly in the Round Robin. So we're really proud of the team. They're just, the kids that participate in the Science Bowl from all over the city are just the best and brightest, and we're just so pleased to be affiliated with a program like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. I think, Mr. Labanze, did you want to speak on this presentation?
To the students at the North Hollywood, to the coach, and certainly to the Department of Water and Power, and Walter, we're also building great engineers for the future, contributing. And that's what I think is so special about the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power's effort to support this very important thing. But you got a lock on this. I just want to know, Coach, what are you doing? Because you got to spread that around to everybody, because you're so good. Four years in a row, is that right, Coach?
Seven, seven years.
Seven years in a row. See, I was bad in my math, so I'd be carrying the water for you, but I'd be carrying it with pride, because congratulations to the great Huskies of North Hollywood, champions in the Science Bowl. Good job with you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Labanze.
And let me recognize Mr. Labanze at this time for our next presentation.
I see I'm strong.
How you been?
Good.
Good job. Hey, buddy. Good to see you. Oh, really? Good. Good to see you.
Good to see you. We'll see you back there in a minute.
Thank you. Mr. President, members, as we salute North Hollywood's great Science Bowl champions, we're saluting today one of the greatest officers to ever work at North Hollywood, Nancy Reeves. And I'm joined by my great colleague, Wendy Gruehl, who we share much of this area, and there is, as you all know, Councilmembers, when you go to a community meeting and you get there and there's a senior lead officer who has impact and credibility, impacted credibility, it makes it so much easier for us to communicate the message, to solve the problem. And Nancy Reeves certainly has impact and credibility. For over eight years, you've served as a senior lead in this particular part of North Hollywood. She's had a 23-year career with the Los Angeles Police Department, from West L.A. to Communications, to Newton, to Metropolitan, as well as North Hollywood Division. She is a very special person who's done many things to also promote the spirit of core of the officers. As you can see, many officers from North Hollywood who are here, including Captain Sweet, it's good to see you. Stand-up officers from North Hollywood, let's salute you as well this morning on this here. I know. Yeah, I know. She was selected the Officer of the Year in 2002 due to her dedication to North Hollywood and its community. She has had a wonderful career with the Los Angeles Police Department, but now has chosen to retire, which is all great loss. But before we present the resolution, I'm going to call on the great Councilwoman of the Second District for her remarks, which I'm sure will echo a lot of what I've said about this great person, Nancy Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. Labanze. I met Nancy when I was running for office, and Nancy was everywhere. Nancy has also kept these gentlemen, as you see here, in line in the North Hollywood station, yes. And Nancy is someone, although she may be, you know, small, petite, I wouldn't want to meet her in an alley when she was chasing you. I think you were one of those recently, as they had chasing that one individual or a couple of robbery suspects, where our community helped and assisted in not-so, you know, normal ways. But she ran, jumped over fences, you name it. Nancy has been, I think, an exemplary Los Angeles police officer and someone that we can be proud of. And she is someone that the community cares about, trusts, and knows that she has their best interests at heart. And again, she has been tough-minded as well, and I think that that kind of combination has made Nancy an incredible officer, and that she will be sorely missed in the city of Los Angeles. We were talking to her husband, who has plans for her, or she has plans for him, to get a second job, right? To keep you in the lap of luxury. But I just want to say thank you to Nancy, thank you to all the North Hollywood officers that are here today. You can see that this is quite a team and quite a family, and I appreciate everything that they do each and every day. And I know, we'd like to also introduce Nancy's husband, who's a part of our Los Angeles Police Department as well, if you would stand up and we can recognize her husband.
Rick Massa is one of the great officers, 33-year veteran of the Metropolitan Division, ran the Olympic torch in 1996, right through the pueblo. But more importantly, Wendy, this officer and his colleague, and I got to talk about him, because he's so special, because he's your husband, he answered the call on that fateful day. He, along with his officers from Metropolitan Division, were in training in Elysian Park, and they raced out to North Hollywood. And he and his partners were one who took the bad people out, who terrorized that bank at North Hollywood, the Bank of America. Rick Massa, give him a great hand. He's still going to be with us.
So it's our pleasure to, Mr. Labanze, present this certificate to Nancy Reeves for her dedication as a Los Angeles police officer.
Hear, hear.
Yeah, yeah.
And, Mr. President, Mr. Clerk, in the great tradition of the First Amendment, Officer Reeves declined to make a comment. Congratulations on your great 23 years. Give Officer Reeves a big hand.
Mr. Labanze, I believe it's, she has the right to remain silent.
Yes, she, very good. Touche, Mr. President. Very good. All righty. Mr. President, as well as Officer Reeves and the great officers from North Hollywood Division, we have a special delegation here from Seoul, Korea, from South Korea. Congressman Hunking Shin, a congressman who we welcome, who is representing the import-export international trade between our city of Los Angeles and South Korea. Also, Mr. Young Ho No is with us, and on behalf of Mayor Han, we wanted to salute them and welcome the delegation to Los Angeles. Congressman, welcome.
I want to thank Mayor James Han and the Councilman Tom Labanze for welcoming Korean delegation. I was former Korean National Congressman. As Korean Congressman, I help any importance, and I look forward to build strong trade relationship between Korea and Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Kamsamida, good evening, big, big, big salute. We're going to take some pictures. And finally, as fast as it could be, we ask you to be seated for a moment, please. We welcome you to the City Council. We'll give you a full tour of the tower, and ask you to sit right here, if you would. And also, give me that one certificate on my desk. Give me the certificate. Lastly, there's nothing great about where we grew up, that we love to run into people who we haven't seen in a long time. And please, Mr. President, if I may, the pride of John Marshall High, number 41 of the 1971 John Marshall High School barristers, Mark Orman, I haven't seen him in 35 years. Come here, Mark. Give him a big hand, official welcome back. He and his family live in Portland, Oregon. Want to welcome you back, and congratulations.
Great to be here.
In the summer of '71, we drove a 59 Ramblerr, Denny, up to Canada. It was a great time. Anyway, I thank you, and it's great, want to say anything to Los Angeles?
I'm pleased as punch to be here.
All right, good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
And you had a nice chauffeur into City Hall this morning, I saw. Thank you. Next presentation, Council President Alex Padilla. Thank you, Tom, and colleagues. Only because I know you're interested, I did get a chance to ask Mark, has Tom Labanze changed at all since high school? And the response was, not a bit, not a bit. Colleagues, appreciate your attention this morning for another very special presentation. I'd like to call forward Joyce Cardella and her family, along with, I need some assistance here, I need a CLA recommendation on this presentation. Please welcome Ron Deaton and former CLAs, Ken Spiker Senior, and Bill McCarley. This is, I think, as a VAC put it this morning, the Mount Rushmore of CLAs. The CLAs of the city of Los Angeles. Well, colleagues, as you all know, we were dealt quite a blow a couple months ago with the announced pending retirement of Joyce Cardella, who has served the city of Los Angeles for 42 outstanding years. And especially in the context of this term-limited environment, Joyce is someone who has seen it all. She's seen it all, but has continued to serve not only CLAs, but various departments and offices with grace, with the hard work ethic, with honesty, integrity, and modesty, and humility. We can't say enough about her, and it's great that she's able to have some family join her on this very special day. But colleagues, to give you an idea of what she has seen and what she has lived through, it not only includes the growth of our airports and the Port of Los Angeles, the 1984 Olympics, three major earthquakes, and on, and on, and on. But probably, scoring larger, on the Richter scale, is her service under four mayors of Los Angeles, eight different council presidents, 67 members of the Los Angeles City Council, four CAOs, and seven CLAs. Ron Deaton likes to say, you know, "Councilmember so-and-so, you know, if we disagree, you know, you're going to be gone one day because of term limits, and I'm still here." Joyce is the one that has looked into the eyes of CLAs and said, "Do what you want, you'll be gone one day, and I'll still be here." But unfortunately, the day is soon upon us where we're going to miss Joyce, but we thank her and are truly indebted to her for her service. I'll let her introduce the family that she has been able to have with her today. She does have two children and several very loving grandchildren. And in a Tom Labanze fashion, let me also announce that she is a graduate from Franklin High School, right here in Los Angeles. Ladies and gentlemen, Joyce. And you want to have Dennis speak at all?
Dennis, Dennis.
I'm sorry, hold on, Ken. Councilmember Misakowski. Ken, hold on a second. We've got some speakers that want to go first. The first one we have is Councilmember Perry.
Joyce, I want to tell you that I take great delight in saying what I need to say. You're the only other woman who I think Mr. Deaton really feared. Other than his wife. And you set a high, high standard of professionalism. I always knew that if I needed to get something done, or to make sure that Mr. Deaton was able to get it done, it's because of you. And I suspect he would acknowledge that as well. I'm going to miss you because you set such a high standard of professionalism and engendered such respect. You were so intelligent and someone whom everybody should emulate, and you took such great pride in your job. And I think people like you are what makes working here in the city of Los Angeles such a special experience, and I truly hope that you're going to enjoy your retirement.
Councilmember Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joyce, we all know here how special you are to everybody in the city, but especially to Ron. But I've got to say that there isn't a person, I don't know how many of you have called Ron's office from time to time and said, "Is he available? Can he talk to you?" And she so protects him, but appropriately so. She will never give anything away. We might be in the heat of a battle, and all of us want to see Ron to get this report or that report. She will say, "He's with another council member." She'll never say, "He's with Councilman so-and-so," or "Here's who's seen him now," who goes in and out that door. She is the gatekeeper, but it is always with the utmost respect of all of us, really, that there's not somebody better or more important or differently from another. But who he's with at that time is his time with that person, and we all don't need to know about it. And I just, we all know that you have caused him to be in absolute denial. I think you've probably been the one of the persons with the longest-planned retirement, because you planned it, and then postponed, and then postponed, and then postponed it, because Ron was in denial, and it's, I know it's really difficult for you to finally separate yourself. And those other two CLAs behind you, they do stand tall, but they stand all the taller because you were there with them, helping them, making them. And I know this room often is packed here, but it's packed here today with your colleagues, your friends, the people who are in awe of what you have been able to do and make it happen, that those reports get out, that things are smooth, that his office operates, that we in the city operate, is really, really do in large measure to people like you particularly, who never want the limelight, are probably sitting there saying, "Let's get over with all of this." But you made it happen, and you made everyone else, and make this city as strong and good as it can be. So thank you for that. I know that when we hear from them, we're going to hear a lot of the I know that when we hear from them, we're gonna hear a lot of, hopefully, the good stories, but I think the best stories of all would be the ones that you could tell.
Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. It's with extreme pleasure and honor to want to thank you publicly. You know, as a fly on the wall, as a student intern working for the CLA, you were very polite, you were very generous, very, just so professional, and I was always amazed at how much was happening one time back then as a student in the early 80s. And now to have experienced working with you as a staff person and now as a council member, to me, truly has been a real pleasure. And it's great to know that Northeast LA is well represented from Franklin High School graduate, and I believe we have Sacred Heart of Jesus roots as well, back in Lincoln Heights. So to me, it's been great, but I'm truly gonna miss you. And I know that everything you've done, you're one of those unsung heroes, and for that, I thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I think it's interesting to note that all of us that are speaking so far have been former staff members, and I think it's an important distinction. You know, for all the five of us that had the pleasure of working in this council for years before we got to sit in these chairs, whenever we called your office, even as staff members, we were treated with great civility and dignity and respect, and the only thing that changed the day after I was elected, you used a different title. And I think that's appropriate, that, you know, you treat everybody around here with great respect, and that's important. And it was interesting to note, too, that in your introduction, Mr. Padilla said that you acted with civility, but also with certain feelings of respect for everybody, and that in that office, that you, unlike some of the bosses you have, had a great feeling of understanding of importance in this council and who you work for, and you're certainly be a treasure that we had here, and you'll be a big loss to us. As a great friend, but as a very gentle and kind lady. And thank you for all those years of treating me with that respect, regardless of what title I had. I really appreciated that respect, and I think it's important that you treated also city employees with that. And while you may have served 67 councilmen, you probably served how many hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of staff members, but you treat us all with respect. And I think that's a great statement for anybody to have, that you really realize the importance of everybody's job in this building and treat them accordingly and appropriately. And you're gonna be a great treasure missed, and I just wish you the best in your retirement, and good luck to you.
Councilmember Grul.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zine. I was back there taking pictures, and someone said, "They're honoring Joyce." I said, "Oh, I have to get out there." Joyce, I have known you, I think I may have met you before Ron De, from the beginning, when I was about 19 years old and I was interning for Jim Sealy in Washington, DC. And you have always, I think, as Greg Smith mentioned, dealt with everyone with respect. And we still don't know how Ron is going to function without you there, but you are someone who either, if you didn't know the answer to the question, you would find the right person for us, always with courtesy, and you have been a true public servant to all of us. And we are gonna miss you, I think, almost as much as Ron Deaton, because we know you ran that office and you made sure Ron did the right thing. Also, his wife helps him a little bit do that, we know. But I just want to say thank you, and we thought this day would never come, and you are gonna enjoy retirement, I know, but please, keep in touch with all of us, and a big heartfelt thank you from all of us here in the City Council.
Joyce, I just wanted to add, I didn't know you from years past, but my time here as a councilman, you've always been of great assistance to not only me but members of my staff, and I wish you well into retirement. Enjoy the grandchildren, enjoy all the wonderful opportunities. And now we'll hear from your former bosses, that's how they say. Mr. Spiker. Ken Spiker.
As I mentioned earlier, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I've been waiting 20 years for this call, and finally here it is, you know. All the superlatives you folks hear every Friday honoring city department people retiring, private citizens, they all apply to this lady. Every word you hear, plus one, integrity. No, no, I meant stubbornness. This lady built a wall around a CLA, whoever they were, Mr. Gorbachev would have been proud of it. I don't think our beloved president could break it down. Typical example, other than you folks, elected officials, department head would call in, or lobbyists, but don't ever do that. "I have to see Mr. D. May I ask him what you're calling for?" "Well, how many votes does it take when I have a budget to buy this equipment and the mayor's office calls and say, 'I can't do it.'" "Oh, Section 1485, Subparagraph B, 1A, page 167." "No, I might be 168. I'll tell Mr. Deaton you called." "No, no, no, no. I need to know how many, where's the ordinance when trees block the neighbor's view?" "Sir, there is today ordinance. The city doesn't have a law on trees blocking the neighbor's ordinance." "The trees." This lady, I'm gonna ask her one more time for one more favor. When Mike Wallace calls, don't give him an interview, and please, don't ever write a book. Thank you, honey.
Mr. McCarley.
What more is there left for me to say, I guess? It's a pleasure to be here and celebrate Joyce's retirement, and I want to congratulate her. I feel sorry for the council, I feel sorry for Ron. In the nine years I was CLA, I would hope that nobody would ever discover she really was the CLA, and I just went to the office early and did what Joyce told me. But in all sincerity, in the many jobs I had in this city, I had the privilege of working with a lot of very capable and dedicated people. But Joyce set the standard for a great work ethic, for devotion to duty, and the standard of excellence in the performance of those duties that I have never seen anyone exceed. She's been a good friend through the years, and I'm not gonna let her go. She's gonna stay a good friend after retirement. So the best of luck in your retirement, Joyce.
Mr. Deaton.
I guess all good things have to come to an end. When Joyce started, Eisenhower was president. This is the, this was the tallest building in town. Unfortunately, that was the condition when I started with the city as well. Joyce, all people in the CLA's office are special, as you all know, but of the special people, she's the most special. And it's, she doesn't work for the council, she doesn't work for the CLA, she works for the citizens of this city. And that gives her a lot of freedom, and she takes it. But been a very, very good relationship of friends, and we've worked together, and I will miss her dearly. People have asked what will happen to me as a result of her departure. I've usually said, "I will fail." Hopefully not, but she has been, I think, a, as Wendy said, actually, two people have a lot to do with what I do in this world. One of them's coming this afternoon from home to say goodbye to Joyce as well. But Joyce and Ellery, my wife, really are, have been a key part of my life for these last 12 years. She was a key part before then, but then I was on another end of her, hi there, another end of her business, which was a little different, and she had fun telling me what I wasn't doing correctly, but that's, of course, she's done that fairly well in the last 12 years as well. Anyway, she is a unique individual, a unique employee, a unique person to the citizens of this city, and her, and obviously will be missed, I think, by all people in this city, and I only wish you the best for your future.
We have Councilman Padilla, we have Councilmember Garcetti. He pushed the button late, but there he is.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and it's a tough act to follow. I know when you started, Joyce, that Eisenhower was president, and Ron began his negotiations with the Transamerica Building that year. And like Mr. Zine, I too was a latecomer to City Hall, so we haven't had the years that many of the people have spoken about here, but I know that folks on my staff have. I'm very proud of the people who I work with. Lina Mirian, my own personal assistant, said that Joyce is the standard, and whenever she has called you, whenever anybody has called, you have been not just helpful, you have gotten things done, and gotten things done better than anybody does around here. So congratulations on this. I want to dispel the rumors. We had a lot of council members visit us, and there were rumors that Mr. Holden and Mr. Burnson were interviewing for your job to replace you, but that is not the case whatsoever. Mr. Deaton will be getting on, but I know that he will be not only, not the same person without you, but that he will be relying more on us than he ever does. So congratulations, Joyce.
Well, Councilmember Labange.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was out of the room for some of the presentation, Joyce, but to you and your family, congratulations. And look at that behind you. Look at right behind you. Just peek at that big tower of strength that has always been there in that office, but you're the foundation of that tower of strength, because you were so good at helping us as a staff and now as council people, the Office of the Legislative Analyst do a great job. And 42 years is wonderful, but I think eight more years, you would have got a bridge down here, so, you know, like Henry P. Rio. But anyway, congratulations to your wonderful success and contribution to Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Joyce, with so much more appreciation and gratitude than we can describe, please accept this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Alex.
Introduce your panel.
I'd like to introduce my son, Ken. My daughter, Deborah, and my grandson, Kyle, and my granddaughter, Madison, and I have four others who are in school today. Thank you very much for everything. I will miss everyone here. I appreciate all your kind remarks, and I hope I've given back as much to the city as it has given to me. Thank you very much.
And colleagues, Mr. Chair, appreciate your indulgence in two other slightly quicker presentations here. Colleagues, I'd now like to call forward Ismael Hernandez Motesuma and his entourage. Colleagues, as many of you know, from time to time, we have, we take advantage of the opportunity and the privilege to make presentations to our partners in the media industry, partners particularly when it comes to news personalities, because as much good as we try to do here in City Hall, as much as we try to do for the city of Los Angeles, it's very critical to be able to communicate that back to constituents and residents throughout the city. And among the numerous news directors, news reporters, news personalities throughout the city, very few have served the people of Los Angeles and his television station, quite like Ismael Hernandez Motesuma, who is now celebrating 25 years of service with KMEX TV, Channel 34, the Univision affiliate here in the city of Los Angeles. There's probably not a single member of the City Council who has not been interviewed by Mr. Hernandez in both English and Spanish, but again, that information has been relayed back to the people who are impacted by it. He's been serving as a reporter, as I mentioned, for KMEX TV, Channel 34, currently part of the morning news program, Noticias Univision 34, primera edición, but has, over the years, served on numerous of the news programs, as well as part of KMEX's charitable and philanthropic activities, such as Navidad en el Barrio's Telethon and the Leukemia Telethon, a native of Guanajuato, Mexico, and a story of the American dream. Please welcome and help me in congratulating Ismael Hernandez Motesuma.
It's un gran honor estar este día aquí con ustedes.
We've got some people who want to speak. Hold on a second.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ludlow.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Council President Zine. I just want to take a moment to thank Senor Hernandez Motesuma for his great work. You've been there at many critical press conferences, and I always enjoy your advice and how we can reach out to the people about these concerns. I appreciate your heartfelt concern for the issues that are impacting those who tend to be voiceless. So for that, I want to just give you a heartfelt thanks and hope that we continue working together, because you know, information is power, and it's the way we can help defend those who don't have that position or the luxury to have that kind of voice. So for that, I thank you.
Thanks a lot, sir.
Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Ismael Felicidades, congratulations on this incredible landmark. I know we talked about that you were approaching the 25th anniversary of your work, and it is just wonderful to see so many Angelenos who have been a part of what you have brought into their living rooms, that you have shown the stories, the human faces, the struggles. So gracias por su excelencia. You have really set the standard as well as a reporter, whether it's English or Spanish, you have set that standard. It underscores how important it is in this city to make sure that we have voices that are covering the stories that so often are not heard, as Mr. Reyes said. And I know we've been together on many of those occasions, whether it was Echo Park Lake and the disappearance of little Jessica Cortez, some of the way that you've been able to give a voice and a picture to the school building that we've been doing. You have really established yourself, not only those last 25 years, as something excellent, but something we can look forward to in these coming two decades as well for more. So congratulations. Thanks very much.
Thanks a lot, Mr. Garcetti. Thank you.
Please proceed. Oh, Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange.
You're the best-looking guy in town, number one, and you report well, and I think as Ed said, his information, his knowledge, his power, and how many people do you give that information to that become involved in community? Tremendous number, so I just want to salute you, and you're always so kind to me when we see you out covering stories. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the service.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Muy buenos dias. Es un gran honor estar en este lugar para recibir este reconocimiento. Good morning. It's an honor to be here today to receive this recognition. Maybe some of you didn't understand what I said in Spanish, and this is a problem with our community, with the Hispanic community, millions of Hispanics community in this town, who doesn't understand whatever you leaders are saying when you develop a law, a new regulation, or try to campaign. That's why we are here, to be the link between you and our millions, millions of community. That's the way they feel when they don't understand that old English. So Canal 34, Univision, and me, been working so hard. Now we know we are helping our community. Now they vote. Now they are part of this community. They are part of taking action in this city. Now they had voice, they've been voting, and they've become citizens. And I'm very glad to be part of this effort to integrate our community and city of Los Angeles. Million of Hispanics now, they can understand whatever you say and the decisions you take every day, and they can participate too. So thanks a lot. I'm gonna keep doing my work as best I can. Thanks a lot for everything, and have a good day.
And colleagues, last but not least, you might have read in the newspaper just a couple of weeks ago, an award, a National Builders Award, that was presented to, come on, Fields Deveraux, to the architectural firm and engineering team of Fields Deveraux, who, among numerous city projects, was entrusted, and I use that word very selectively, with the Lakeview Terrace Library, which opened last summer. You've heard me brag about it before, and I'm gonna brag about it again. The highest level sustainable design and constructed building in the city of Los Angeles. It has set a model not only for other buildings, municipal and private sector buildings throughout Los Angeles, but throughout the country. And I wanted to bring them in for their appropriate and due recognition for having been a partner with the city of Los Angeles in this effort. It's the highest level of sustainability as rated by the U.S. Green Building Council's LEED standards, which includes more than 40% more efficiency than non-sustainable buildings of this magnitude. than non-sustainable buildings of this magnitude, and certainly includes watershed management components as well. I'll let them talk a little bit more about the specific elements of the Lakeview Terrace Library, but I'm just so glad that the building has been highlighted and recognized, not just around this horseshoe and not just in this building, but really, I think with a national awards presentation in Washington, D.C., at the Building Museum, and for a significant ceremony in Chicago as well. Please welcome Peter Deveraux, the principal and CEO of the firm, along with James Weiner, the senior architect. And if Susan Kent, Fontaine Holmes, and Sam Tanaka from the city are here, please join us as well.
First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Padilla and the city council for this recognition. As architects, what we create really isn't our own. It belongs to our clients and our community. And I think that the opportunity to be able to bring some national recognition to this project was really due to the fact that the city council and the Department of Public Works had the vision to ask us to design a platinum-level LEED project. And it was a great opportunity for us, and we are glad we were able to deliver on that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're welcome. Councilmember Perry for presentations.
It's a pleasure to present the guests behind me on behalf of myself and Councilmember Parks. They are Darice Goodwin, event manager; Cynthia Bolden, director of sponsorship and special promotions; Greg King, media relations director; and I guess the gatekeeper, Alex Moya, on behalf of the group known as Real Men Cook. It is a pleasure to present the organizers of this tremendous annual event, Real Men Cook, to you today. This annual event is committed to honoring the inner-city fathers and men whose positive accomplishments benefited our entire community. This year, they are celebrating their 15th anniversary by putting on this world-class event. Real Men Cook is about giving families time to spend together and to celebrate the men in their lives and in the community. Over the last few years, they have helped to raise close to $1 million for local charities. This group was founded in 1989 by Kofi and Yvette Moto, CEO and president of Resource Associates International Limited. Real Men Cook has grown from its humble beginnings with Mr. and Mrs. Moto and a small team executing the program One Father's Day in Chicago to a world-class program that was executed in five major markets in 1999 and 10 major markets in the year 2000 through 2003. Today, Real Men Cook is the premier Father's Day event and will take place in 11 cities throughout the United States, including Los Angeles, Atlanta, Chicago, Dallas, Detroit, Miami, New Orleans, New York, Philadelphia, Houston, and for the first time this year, Minnesota. Millions recognize Real Men Cook as a national urban Father's Day tradition. This year, Real Men Cook will convene at our beautiful Los Angeles Exposition Community Center at Exposition Park, with more than 1,000 people expected to attend and enjoy the culinary splendor of more than 100 local male chefs. In conjunction with the men of the community, some of the celebrity talent who have confirmed to participate as cooks are K-Cowls Judge Joe Brown, jazz recording artist Doc Powell and Gary Taylor, and BET Comic View Def Comedy Jam comedian Shang. Joining us here today to accept this certificate on behalf of Real Men Cook are the executives from the Big Balloon Communications, who were instrumental in the planning process of this year's Real Men Cook event.
We want to thank everyone for having us today. We see this as a major recognition for Real Men Cook because it has been around now for 15 years, and it is something that really is honoring fathers by just showcasing some of the great things that actually take place in our community. Oftentimes, what we see are negative portrayals of men in our community, and what Real Men Cook does each year is actually, you know, honor those fathers who were there, single dads and brothers and uncles and so forth, who really are making a commitment to mentoring young people and loving their wives and loving their children. So we want to thank you for recognizing us. Also, we want to thank our sponsors this year. This year, we have Ralphs and Lowry's. They've really stepped to the table and done a lot of great things in terms of showing their commitment to our community. And again, we just want to thank you for showing us this love today.
Thank you. Don't go too far. Just got two more quick ones. I want to take a picture in the back. Okay, thank you. Just be a second, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to invite Mike Schultz up. Mike Schultz, who is the director of the Southern California Field Office for the United States Environmental Protection Agency Pacific Southwest Region 9 Office. And I'm proud to announce that the EPA Field Office recently opened in downtown Los Angeles at 600 Wilshire Boulevard, at the corner of Wilshire and Grand Avenue, right here in the 9th Council District. I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge this important addition to our city and to introduce Mike, who has exceptional credentials and will be able to provide resources and knowledge right here in our city in the area of environmental protection. He has worked for EPA since 1976, moved to Los Angeles from San Francisco in October of 2002 to become the director of the EPA's Southern California Field Office. And for six years prior to his move, he served as associate director of Region 9's Water Division. He has an extensive background in Clean Water Act programs and has experience in managing a variety of EPA functions, including strategic planning, policy development, grants, contracts, and information technology. He holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in environmental design from the University of Washington in Seattle. Currently, he serves on the Board of Governors for the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission. He has already worked to bring greater attention to the need for environmental justice by advocating on behalf of the Environmental Affairs Department here in our city, which the EPA works closely with to ensure the health of our urban environment. So I wanted to take this opportunity to welcome Mike and the EPA to downtown Los Angeles, knowing that they will perform a very important role in our city in and in protecting and preserving our environment. Do you want to say a few quick words?
Thank you, Councilwoman Perry. It's a pleasure to be here and an honor to be recognized by the city council, whether it's clean air, clean water, waste management, superfund site cleanups, right on to the notion of the green building that was mentioned earlier. EPA has a significant role to play here in Southern California. We work closely with the city, the Public Works Department, the Environmental Affairs Department, to name a few, and we have been pleased to recognize the Environmental Affairs Department the last two years with our Earth Day Awards, which are provided annually from our San Francisco office. We look forward to strengthening these working relationships with the city, and I'm very pleased to be here today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Don't go too far. We'll get to him in a bit, okay? Okay, thank you very much. In my, for my final presentation, I'd like to ask Hamid Badad and Mr. Greg Fisher to join me here. Throughout the history of the city of Los Angeles, there have been many ordinances, rules, and policies, but it is fair enough to say that perhaps none of them has produced as much as what our Adaptive Reuse Ordinance has produced. In April 1999, the city council approved an ordinance which has proven to be the most effective policy and the leading tool for the development of housing in downtown Los Angeles and now citywide. This ordinance, which started the vision to create a 24-hour downtown, is not only doing that, but also greatly helping us and provided much-needed housing. Since its inception, this ordinance is responsible for the creation of 7,500 units of adaptive reuse loft housing. Although this ordinance has been mostly utilized in the downtown area, in February of 2003, it was expanded to be effective in other communities, including Hollywood, Mid-Wilshire, Lincoln Heights, Chinatown, and South Los Angeles. And then in December of last year, we voted to expand it citywide. Joining me here today from the Office of the Mayor is Hamid Badad, the director of the Adaptive Reuse Program for the city of Los Angeles. To, are you getting a PowerPoint?
Yes.
How long is that going to take?
About five minutes.
Um, let me just say a few words. Okay, to just talk generally about the results of this ordinance so far. Let me just say a few words about that now.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. My name is Hamid Badad. As Councilwoman mentioned, I work with the Mayor Hans Office of Economic Development. We did have a powerful presentation, but in the interest of time, we're going to skip that. I'm just here to basically report to this council one of the most successful programs that this city has been able to collectively accomplish, basically with the Mayor Hans Office of Economic Development Assistant and the vision of this council and cooperation of various departments in the city of Los Angeles. We have started this program since 1999, and at the present time, as Councilwoman mentioned, we're going over a production line of 7,500 units of housing for, in various stages of construction or planning or basically occupancy. Throughout the years, many of the members of this council have been extremely helpful in this program, and various city staff have been helping us greatly. But one of the individuals who has been always during this time with us and never left us alone has been Mr. Greg Fisher, who in my opinion is the walking historian of the city of Los Angeles. So we're here to acknowledge and appreciate his assistance.
Thank you very much, Hamid. I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank another individual whom many of you already know, but he has been instrumental in these early years of furthering the production because of this ordinance. And as so many of you already know, Greg Fisher, who loves Los Angeles probably more than Tom Labange, and has a deep and rich, see, there you go, deep and rich understanding of our city's history and its roots. This has served us well, and in particular, served me very well, as he works for the 9th Council District. And I hope your mother is watching. If not, you can tell her tonight, to better understand the roots of our city, the development of downtown Los Angeles. This knowledge, he has used to help facilitate better adaptive reuse projects throughout the district, and I wanted to thank this opportunity, take this opportunity to publicly thank him and to thank him for working so well with the Office of the Mayor for the past three years. And no, he's not retiring, and don't think about hiring him, okay? Don't even try it. And present him with this certificate. Thank you very much, Mr. Fisher, as we call him.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Colleagues, if it's all right with you, let's take a brief pause in our presentations for today. We'll come back in just a second. Let me ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Cardinals Garcetti, Gruel, Hans, Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vidal, Gosa, Weiss, Zain, Padilla, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And the council is now officially in session. We do have a brief agenda today, colleagues, if we can dispense with consent items. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zain moves. Ms. Hans seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Gruel moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds.
Before beginning the agenda, there has been a request to continue a few items. There's been a request to continue item 18 to Tuesday, June 22nd.
Members, any objection to continuing item 18? If none, item 18 is continued. Next item, please.
There's also been a request to continue item 21 to Tuesday, July 6th.
Also without objection, and believe we've also received requests to continue item number four and item number 20 from the regular agenda to this Tuesday. Also without objection. Next item, please.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 6 are items to notice for public hearing. Council should deny the protest and confirm the assessments on 1 through 5, with the exception of 4.
Okay. Members, items 1 through 6 now before us. I do not have requests for members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open. Public hearings are closed. Request for specials, items 1 through 6. Mr. Garcetti?
Nine.
No? Items 1 through 6. If not, item 4 has been continued. We have the recommendations as they appear on the agenda, as amended by the clerk. There's no request for specials. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. Colleagues, those are our ordinances, and do carry over for a second reading. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 7 is a commission appointment. Do you wish to consider it this time?
Let's hold that temporarily on the desk. We'll come right back to it. Next item, please.
Items 8 through 16 are items for which public hearings have been held. On item 11, the Personnel Committee concurred with the Housing Committee, and that report has been distributed. On item 12, a public hearing was held in the Housing Committee, and that report has also been distributed to all members. And for clarification on item 15, there is no action by the council today. The matter will go over for one week for a vote on June 25th.
Okay. Members, 8 through 16 now before us. These matters have had public hearings. The motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Specials? Mr. Zain.
I'd like to continue 8 till Tuesday, and a special on 12, please.
Okay. Members, without objection, item 8 is continued till this upcoming Tuesday. That will be June 22nd. Item 12 called special by Mr. Zain.
Number 9, there's a technical amendment, which is being circulated, 9A substitute motion rather.
Okay. Has that been circulated, Mr. Clerk?
It's being circulated as we speak.
Have not received it just yet.
Okay. We'll hold that on the desk for Mr. Garcetti for a technical amendment. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Again, item 15 holds over for a week for a vote on June 25th. Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, can we go forthwith on item 13, please?
Forthwith on item 13. Next item, please.
Items 17 and 19 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. And without objection, the council shall consider items 17 and 19 today. Colleagues, I do not have requests for members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are opened and closed. Request for specials, 17 or 19? Seeing none? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
That would take you back to the items called special. Do you wish to consider the special meeting agenda?
Let's temporarily recess the regular meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardinals Garcetti, Gruel, Hans, Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vidal, Gosa, Weiss, Zain, Padilla, 11 members present, and a quorum.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, we have a four-item special agenda before us. Mr. Clerk, first.
Mr. President, there has been a request to continue item 4 to Wednesday, June 23rd, Tuesday, the 22nd.
Okay. Members, request to continue item 4 without objection. So ordered. Next item.
Item 1 and 2 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. And colleagues, public hearings have been held. We do have committee reports on these items. A motion is required to reopen the public hearings. Any requests for specials? Mr. Smith.
Yes, number 3, please.
Okay. We're there in just a second. Items 1 and 2 of the special agenda currently before us. If we don't have requests for specials, let's open the roll on these two items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay. Those are approved. Item 3 is the only item remaining on the special agenda. Let's continue the matter to the regular meeting and adjourn the special meeting at this time, returning to the regular meeting agenda. Have a few items called special. We also have a commissioner to consider. Let's take that up at this time. Ms. Gutierrez, if you'd like to come forward at this time. Colleagues, item number 7, mayoral appointment to the Board of Fire Commissioners. Do you have a committee report for approval? Is there any discussion at this time on the appointment of Ms. Gutierrez? Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety did have a meeting on Ms. Gutierrez. I think we were very impressed. I think at that point, it was just Mr. Zain and I, although I think we were joined later by Mr. Weiss, so it is a committee report. Ms. Gutierrez, I think impressed us when we talked with her on the issues and focus that she would bring to the fire department. And as we know, it's a very, very, very important of our public safety, providing of services in the city, whether it's brush clearance, whether it's, you know, proper equipment, whether it's hazard training, whether it's the issues today and the first emergency responders in. We are asked much of our fire department, and I think we are going to ask much of Ms. Gutierrez in helping us oversee it, but I think she indicated she could rise to the task, was very, was going to be very, very focused on doing this. And I don't know if you would like to address the council in any way at this time about your issues and what you're going to be coming forward with.
I look forward to rolling up my sleeves and working with the department. I have quite a bit of support here from the department and from the commission staff here today. I'm very grateful for that. I wasn't sure if I should be grateful or concerned, actually, when I saw so many of them here today, but they are a great department. them here today, but they are a great department and I look forward to working with them and with you. Thank you.
Again, we had a very positive recommendation from the Public Safety Committee, so I ask for an aye vote for the confirmation of this commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Miskowski. I have on the queue, colleagues, Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Zain, followed by Ms. Grul, followed by Ms. Han, followed by Mr. Labonge. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to share with my colleagues that in Ms. Veronica Gutierrez, we have a person who has a long history of being involved in the city, comes from a great family tradition. Many of her relatives are also very strongly active in many areas in the city at different levels. But I really had opportunity to work with her as a deputy under not only Councilman Jackie Goldberg, but also with then-Councilman Gloria Melina, who's now our supervisor. So, I think we have a person here, I know we have a person here, has many talents, understands the city, and that's the expertise we need. Not only is she Latina, but also understands the issue of the have and have-nots. And in the fire department, there's always room for improvement in how we have a greater reflection of the makeup of the city. And I just want to thank her for her presence and advocacy and look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Zain.
Thank you, Mr. President. We really grilled you in public safety, but your qualifications speak for themselves. You've been very dedicated to the people of Los Angeles. And the reason you have all the firefighters and the command staff here is that LA City Fire Department's a real family environment and they take care of each other. So, they're obviously here to take care of you as a commissioner to help move along the public safety agenda that they have with the fire service and the paramedic service. And I know that the questions that we asked you at the public safety meeting, you answered extremely well. You do have a lot of experience working in the arena of public service, so you'll be a welcome addition to the Los Angeles City Fire Commission. And it's a very important commission, as you know, a very proud commission with a long history of providing service to the people of Los Angeles. So, I wish you well in that endeavor. And when all those buttons are pushed and councilmembers want to speak, it's not to grill you, it's to congratulate you. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. I too rise in support of Ms. Gutierrez's appointment. I've had the pleasure of knowing her since her early days with Supervisor Melina. She left town for a while and we're so happy that she is back in Los Angeles and particularly willing to serve as a fire commissioner. And I believe she is going to add a wealth of knowledge and I think passion for the city and to support our fire department. And as Andy Fox said, that the best department in the city of Los Angeles. So, they're very, have a lot of pride in what they do. And I know you're going to be a wonderful asset and resource for them as a commissioner and committed to that. So, just congratulations and thank you for your willingness to serve as a commissioner.
Thank you.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, President. Colleagues, I am very happy to stand up and give my enthusiastic endorsement to Veronica for this position. I mean, I don't know how many of you know that Veronica and I worked together. In fact, Veronica was my boss at Southern California Edison, so, you know, I have really no reason to be nice to you now. But Veronica, Veronica to me is the kind of woman who really comes at every single issue and looks at all the facts, looks at all the angles and really looks to solve problems, particularly in my experience, listening to community members, listening to those who sometimes have been disenfranchised in the process. And I would say one thing, and that's Veronica is a problem solver. And I can't think of a better woman who is more qualified to sit on our fire commission and really lead this city forward in a lot of problems that I feel we need to have solved on a regular basis. So, I am enthusiastically endorsing your appointment to this commission and I know, in fact, you will do a good job. She's a tough boss.
Thank you.
Ms. Labonge.
Edison. Okay, good. Are you still with Edison?
Yes, I am.
How's it going?
It's going.
Ah, it's a big challenge. So, you can see, understand the challenge. Veronica, congratulations on the mayor's selection to this appointment and you're, it is one of the greatest departments in this city and this country. And that great leadership, under Chief Amatri's leadership these last several years, they put a paramedic in every station, which is transform our ability to serve people, a paramedic firefighter or an actual paramedic. One thing I wanted to ask you to do in a, in a way and find a way to do it, because I remember this last, this year, I think it is, we celebrated the 25th anniversary of women firefighters. And we have a large number of women firefighters, but I'd like to see us always open our arms as wide as possible. I know we partnership with East Los Angeles Community College in, I believe, Valley, and I'm not sure what other community colleges, but partner with those community colleges to give everyone an opportunity, like all these young people who are here from the Bridges Program who are here getting honored, okay? We want to create a great bridge from these schools and institutions to the fire department, the fire service or other agencies that they could be. And I think that's a very important task and I hope you could advocate for that.
I absolutely will.
Because I believe it's real important and understanding the challenges that are with that in mind. And I also think too, in working with the public directly, because we don't realize sometimes, we take for granted, you know, you're Edison, that we took for granted our power and we had a challenge. We took, we take for granted sometimes our fire safety. And I will remark, everybody, it's the change of seasons this weekend to summertime and the brush season is already underway and the, the high hazard issue. To advocate some of those community challenges, to make sure that people throughout the city, the hills of Mel Cerino west to Santa Monica Mountains and the surrounding valley, rim of the valley, throughout, the brush clearance program is so important. But the big thing, Veronica, is partnership with schools to create a pool for young men and women to have one of the greatest careers that they could have, if they could achieve appointment to the Los Angeles City Fire Department. So, that's just something I wanted to ask you and I want to congratulate you. And also on the business side, good luck, Edison.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. And the only thing I'll say is say hi to your mom for me.
Okay, I will.
Let's open the roll.
She says hi to you, by the way.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations and thank you for your service. Forthwith, please. And I believe 9A has been submitted. I've initialed that as it's coming around. Ms. Miskowski, you had a special motion?
Mr. President, if we can take up a special one at this time.
Mr. Clerk, has that been circulated?
Yes, it has, Mr. President. Special one has been circulated, introduced by Councilmember Miskowski.
Okay. Well, then, before taking that up, but we do have two other presentations. Let's come back to Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Mr. President, colleagues, we actually have more than two, I think, between the two of us, we have five, but we'll do them very quickly. And we really appreciate everybody's patience today. I'd like to invite Consul General from Malaysia to join us up here, as well as our Assistant General Manager, Mark Mariscal from the Wreckin' Parks Department. And we're very honored today to have Consul General of Malaysia, Mohammed Zulkelfli Nur, who is here today, because we are, Mr. Reyes and I, inviting everybody in the City of Los Angeles, inviting all of you colleagues, inviting folks like Tom Labonge, who I know is fielding a boat for the Dragon Boat Races, to come to the 27th Annual Lotus Festival. Lotus Festival is hands down probably the most well-attended festival in the City of Los Angeles, celebrating Asian Pacific Islander heritage here in Los Angeles. Each year, a different country is highlighted. We look at all of the cultures that are there, wonderful food, as I mentioned before, the Dragon Boat Races, one of the best fireworks exhibitions anywhere in Los Angeles, and a chance for Angelenos to come together, to learn about the different backgrounds that people have, to interact with one another, to take in wonderful dance and music. There's a stage that literally all day long will be having different performances that will highlight Malaysian culture and some of our other Asian Pacific Islander heritage here in the City of Los Angeles. Mr. Reyes and I share Echo Park, so I wanted to turn the microphone over to him, too. Our General Manager, John Mukri, was here. He had to go inspect pools, which Mr. Mariscal wanted you all to know that every council district, the Wreckin' Parks Department is taking very seriously, needs to have pools, needs to have pools that are up and running. So, that's why he had to give an early exit, but I'd like to hear from Mr. Reyes. And then we'll hand over to the Consul General to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. One, I want to thank the Consul General for his patience. I know he was expecting to be at this point about an hour ago, but I just want to thank him and every, all of his dignitaries have come to show their support. And you know, in Los Angeles, this is another great example of what a global city we are. We have an international presence. And Malaysia is a beautiful country, one of many Asian Pacific Islander cultures have been featured at this great festival year after year. So, when, when you want to see real dance, real food, the richness of cultures throughout the world and spotlight Malaysia, this is the place. If you don't have to vacation Malaysia, well, you can if you want, but come on down here this day and enjoy such, all these great features. So, welcome all and let's have a great time. Councilman Garcetti.
All right. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce to you the Consul General of the great nation of Malaysia, a place who has not only tallest building in the world, but the most beautiful beaches and something that you will all be learning about at the Lotus Festival with 100,000 fellow Angelenos. Please welcome Consul General Mohammed to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Eric. At the outset, I would like to extend my warmest congratulations and also I would like to extend my sincere appreciation to the City of Los Angeles for honoring Malaysia to be featured this year at the Lotus Festival. In particular, I would like to extend my deepest and warmest honor to Department of Park and Recreation of City of Los Angeles and the advisory board of the Lotus Festival for having been working with us for the last nine months to put this Lotus Festival to a success. I, when, when this idea was first mooted, you know, last year in 2003, I, as a representative of government of Malaysia, took the offer because we view that the City of Los Angeles have a lot of similarity with Malaysia, with its multiracial, multi-religious, multi-ethnic. And we, here, we like to contribute our bit to show that, you know, that in a multiracial society, we can live peacefully. And this is what we are going to show to the City of Los Angeles, our contribution. And I, with that, I would like to thank you very much. Thank you.
On behalf of the city, we'd like to again to welcome everybody on July 10th and 11th to Echo Park, the beautiful lake there. And on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, present this resolution to the country of Malaysia as represented by the Consul General today and to thank them for sharing their culture with us this year. Come out and we'll hope to see you then.
Mr. President, through you, I would like also to extend our simple token to the City of Los Angeles.
Yeah. Oh, here, oh, good. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is for all of us.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Great. We'll open this and preview it a little bit later. That'll be good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to invite Walter Clark up here for a second presentation. Walter Clark, give him a round of applause while he comes up here from the Housing Department. Walter Clark joined the Housing Department when I was three years old, on October 25th, 1974. And he is, or has retired on June 15th of this year. The last position that Mr. Clark held is Director of Housing for the Neighborhood Revitalization Division of Los Angeles Housing Department. But we're really honoring him for over 30 years of work here, outstanding, dedicated service, not only to the City of Los Angeles, but to the tenants, to landlords, to the residents and to the communities of Los Angeles that he has helped to revitalize, to bring and to breathe hope back into. He has been an inspirational leader within the Housing Department in the performance of existing and developing new programs as well. We ask both sometimes from our employees, not only to make sure that the good things we have done in the past continue, but that we be entrepreneurial and that we think about how we can do things even better. He raised employee productivity, morale through his approach to work, through his personality and his passion in serving the housing needs of the citizens of Los Angeles, the people of Los Angeles, has been nothing short of exemplary. He has demonstrated, as we write in this resolution today, the highest job performance, excellent leadership, commitment and strong teamwork throughout his city career. And we have this resolution, which all of my colleagues, the mayor, the city attorney and city controller have signed, attested by our city clerk, Mr. Carey. And we'd like to congratulate you, Walter, on your retirement, say that we're going to miss you. We appreciate all that you have done to make this a better city and indeed, we stand on the shoulders of giants like you who have come before us. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank the council and all of you for this proclamation. It started out as a job many years ago and it very quickly turned into a mission and a career. I want to thank you for the opportunity of allowing me to be part of a great team of people who wanted to make a difference and who have in fact, made a difference in the lives of many people in the City of Los Angeles. I want to thank you particularly for the action that you took during the recent budget deliberations when you extended the Handy Worker Program, which is very near and dear to my heart, one of the programs that I manage. So, I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for your forward-looking insight and we look forward to continued support for the Housing Department. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And we want to thank his wife, Norma, as well, for being here, too. Next presentation is, we have a, Mr. Labonge mentioned before, we have an incredible class, come on forward, everybody, of graduating eighth graders from the LA Bridges Program. We have an incredible program here in the City of Los Angeles that invests in and believes in young people here, that says that young people should have all the same chances that anybody else does in this country, that people here in Los Angeles can be empowered in their own communities. And the LA Bridges Program, working through our middle school students, does just that. Since 1997, the LA Bridges Program has expanded to be into 27 Bridges Middle Schools across the city. And over 500 core youth are graduating today from eighth grade and from the program. They have been assisted with their success through all sorts of programs, which give job skills, personal skills, which create friendships and bonds. I know many of the students who are in the graduation class today will stay friends and colleagues for many, many years to come, whether it's looking at case management, individual counseling, counseling for families, homework assistance, mentoring, anger management, and we all needed anger management probably in seventh and eighth grade, supervised recreation, field trips to see this great region and this great city, parenting programs for their folks as well and support, community events, and of course, the real caring and the support of the staff themselves from LA Bridges. Many LA Bridges staff actually work on LAUSD campuses and we thank LAUSD for being a part of this partnership. They have turned not only into caseworkers and mentors, but real advocates for young people alongside with the young people that are at. And at its core, Bridges is really about creating positive relationships. It's about creating positive relationships between youth. It's about creating positive relationships between youth and their teachers and their communities and the folks around them and planting a small little seed that says, not only can you have hope, but here is help in that hope to make sure that you can turn your lives into whatever you want it to be. We have a number of folks to recognize today. Like to first just talk about two of our youth and then we'll go to a few others, but everybody here, even those who are not speaking, you're all champions today and all are honored by each one of us in the city council. But we have two youth who are going to speak on behalf of the young people, because you always hear from us, but you don't always hear from the young people. Cheryl Batress, who's from Berando Middle School in CD1, and Braulio Garcia from John Muir Middle School, CD9. These two individuals are the valedictorians and today, we want to present them, these certificates of being valedictorians of this Bridges Class. And then we will hear a little bit more and honor some of the staff and the people who have made this possible. bit more and honor some of the staff and the people who have made this possible. So Braulio? And Cheryl?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Batress, and I am an eighth grader at Berando Middle School. I'm writing this speech to represent L.A.'s Bridges Program and tell how they all helped me. One of the persons who helped me was Anna, because she is the one who worked with me to complete all my core requests, so I could get out of probation. Another thing they helped me with was to finish my community service, and I also went to touring after school with a Korean Young Community Service. I was able to receive counseling service as well. I think L.A.'s Bridges Program is a good center to have, have for all the people who have problems, they will help you however they can. One of the reasons I went there is because my probation officer sent me there, but I think L.A.'s Bridges very much because through L.A.'s Bridges I have released that I can change my attitude and get along with different people. I think if this program will not exist, I would still be in all these problems I was having. I repeat this again, thank you for all the people who have helped me from L.A.'s Bridges Programs, and thanks to the council member, Eddie Reyes, and Los Angeles City Council for having these type of programs for kids.
Congratulations for Eddie Reyes.
Mr. Garcia, when there's an opportunity, Ms. Hahn, Ms. Perry, and Mr. Reyes.
We have one other student who's going to speak, and then we'll hear from them.
Okay.
Good morning to the city council for hosting this event, to my eighth grade peers who will be graduating this semester, to our families, and to our esteemed guests. My name is Braulio Garcia, and I am proud to serve today as a valedictorian to represent John Muir Middle School. I'm an eighth grader at John Muir Middle School and presently have a GPA of 2.5. Have been in L.A. Bridges since I was in fifth grade. I am grateful for L.A. Bridges for helping my mother and I begin better communication with one another. They offer a parenting class that my mother attends every week. My mother, myself, and my three-year-old brother are able to go to each meeting together. We learn together, talk to one another, and are able to share our ideas. I feel so much closer to my mother now. If it was not the opportunity that I have through L.A. Bridges to bond with my mother, I don't know where we would be. Recently, my family has gone through a lot. My stepfather moved out and I had to watch my mother face new challenges in her life. It was like everything had changed. At times, I felt helpless and like I was in her way, but other times, I felt the need to protect her from the world. I appreciate L.A. Bridges for being there for my family, to help me learn to respect my mother. I didn't always listen to my mother or do what she told me to, but with the help of L.A. Bridges case managers, I have grown, have been able to talk about my feelings and find better ways to release the stress that has been building up inside of me. When I look back on the years I have been with L.A. Bridges, I realize that I have been privileged to take part in the activities that they have offered, in addition to the places I went and the things that I did while in the program. I'm appreciative of the ways that I have matured. I learned not to curse a lot, do better in school, play better basketball. I also learned how to get better at playing the drums. So to take on a little more responsibility at home, to cooperate with others, and to listen to adults, and especially how to be a leader, not a follower. In closing, I would like to sincerely thank the mayor, James Hahn, and our city councilwoman, Jane Perry, and the entire L.A. City Council for always supporting the L.A. Bridges Program. Without the continued support, we, the youth of Los Angeles, would not have a chance at realizing our dreams. Thanks to all the L.A. Bridges staff and supporting agencies for helping us students realize our dreams. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I just want to stand and congratulate all the young people, certainly all the adults who have taken their time and effort to make L.A. Bridges a success. And you should know that every time, every year when we go through our budget in the city council, we talk about how do we spend our dollars in the city? Where are our dollars spent that are most valuable and get us most investment back? And we talk about public safety, and we talk about basic things like streets and sidewalks and trees. But I want you to know that I am very proud that so far, every year, we want to help fund L.A. Bridges, because we feel that this is where our dollars really count, and this is where we're going to get the most investment. And I know I'm very proud of the schools that are in my district, Dana Middle School, Markham Middle School, and Gompers Middle School, which are part of Bridges. And you know, just yesterday, I was at a seminar, a summit, that the mayor's office, along with Human Relations Commission, has put on, and they wanted to bring together people from all over on how do we solve gang violence in the city of Los Angeles? And everyone talked about a different ways, more police officers, gang injunctions. But the most hope came from when we talked about, let's work with our young people to prevent them from joining gangs in the first place. Let's give our kids a positive alternative to getting in trouble and to joining gangs. And that's what L.A. Bridges does. We tell you kids to say no all the time. Say no to drugs, say no to alcohol, say no to gangs, but we don't give you that many things to say yes to. And L.A. Bridges is something to say yes to, and we're looking right now... We're looking right now at a sea of faces of young people who we want you to know, we believe in you, we have hope in you, and we know that you're going to go on to really do great things because you said yes, even if your probation officer made you. You've said yes to joining L.A. Bridges, and we're thankful for that, and we want to keep supporting you. Congratulations to all the graduates.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Hahn, a yes is a yes, no matter how you got it. No one says it better than the young man who spoke about learning new life skills and learning how to cope and listening to his parents and what that means. You know, we talk a lot about our reward motions that we give out or put up when somebody is killed in a homicide, and we wring our hands and wonder what we could do. And we have this program here, right in front of us. What we can do is continue to fund this program and look for more money to continue to fund it and expand it, so that we can help more kids, so that we can spend money on the front end, helping these kids do things after school and on the weekends, and teaching the kids and their families life skills, as opposed to running around spending money on motions. And maybe we can save more lives this way. I know we can. And I want to say, I'm not, I'm not going to say a special shout out or anything like that, because I'm not that cool. But John Adams Middle School, Bethune Middle School, John Muir Middle School, I'm glad you're here, and I want you to know that I'm proud of you too. Thank you so much.
Mr. Reyes.
Well, I want to thank the staff and all the teachers for the great support for L.A.'s Bridges, the parents who have been there, who are trying their best to cope with what pressures we go through. It's very hard for folks to understand just how tough it can be for our youth. And those of us who grew up in these neighborhoods know it, because we went through it on a daily basis, and to see you go through it, we know what support you need. I want to thank Nanninggall Berando for participating and for being there for our children, our young people. I want to thank Cheryl Batress, who is our valedictorian, that I hope we can hear from her as well. And again, hopefully, we can see that as we go through all these contracts, as we go through all these funding programs, that ultimately, we need to invest in our future, and that's you. Because in this group... Yeah, you do deserve a round of applause. And this group will be our doctors, our lawyers, our teachers, perhaps some council members, few mayors, but it's going to happen, and that's you. So thank you for being there, and thank you for working hard.
Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and my colleagues have been so eloquent today about the importance of L.A. Bridges. For me, each and every one of you give me hope about our future. I talk to students frequently, and I say, you're going to be my doctor, my CPA, you're going to be my firefighter or a police officer, and I want to make sure you're going to do a good job to take care of us, because, and thank you. This young man's going to take care of me right here in the front. But the Bridges Program is right, and as Ms. Hahn again so eloquently said, although we spend a lot of time talking about some of those basic city services in the city, you are the most important aspect of what we do in Los Angeles, of taking care of our children and giving you the tools that you need to succeed. We do need to give you things where you say yes. I meet with young people who say, we have nothing to do, we have nowhere to go. I helped start a program called L.A.'s Best, which many of you may have participated in when you were in elementary school. This is an opportunity for us to look at every level and say, we want to provide you with those wonderful opportunities, and Bridges has done that. And I have three wonderful young people who are in my district, from Fulton Middle School, Luis Hernandez, Erica Martinez, and Carlos Sanchez. So thank you so much. We love you all, Fulton, and thank you for your efforts.
Mr. Labange.
Mr. Reyes, because you're always so passionate as you spoke. Mr. Garcia, last night, I had two guys I hadn't seen in about 30 years, 35 years I went to high school with. One was in here today. And one of the things we talked about, we hope young people are having a good time in their youth, as we had 35 years ago at John Marshall High School, because it's wonderful to be young, and the challenges that you have from wherever you come from are great challenges. But to enjoy that is so important, and a program that you got yourself involved in. You're all standing, because you got yourself involved in a program, pushed, encouraged, but your standing is to credit to yourselves. But I want to say to each and every one of you to work real, real, real hard these next few years, because that's where you'll make it across the bridge to whatever your goal is. My friend made fun of me last night, Mark Gorman, because he said, I remember Tom used to come to City Hall in high school to the Youth Council. And there's a Youth Council member right there in Ed Reyes, and there's one right here in Wendy Gruehl. And so it starts somewhere as you make your journey, but to work hard and take advantage. And at the same time, I always like to say, have your hands out, so you could help the next person. So the hurdle that you may have to jump over is not as high for the next person, because that's the beauty of sharing and the beauty of life. But I want to salute the teachers and all of you, and we'll see you here one day. Thank you. Mr. President, let me salute Bancroft Middle School in the heart of Hollywood for their contribution and their students of L.A. Bridges. Have a hand for Bancroft.
Mr. Zain.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate all you graduates for completing that. You've got a good foundation, and I know from San Fernando Valley, the Bridges Program has brought down the crime, it's brought down the gang activity in the southwest San Fernando Valley. So the program has impact, and you have a foundation. You hear the words coming from this horseshoe, but you put it into action, and that action's going to mean a successful environment for you, and hopefully, wonderful opportunities for you down the road, so you can earn those good dollars, buy all those toys, and enjoy the benefits that they all bring to you. So congratulations to all involved in the Bridges Program. And if you ever travel down in Hollywood, you pass Marshall High School, always remember, Tom Labange graduated from Marshall High School. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues, for those truly inspirational words. I know it means a lot to these young people to hear all of the things that you articulated, and how meaningful this is to each one of them. It is incredible program, and this wasn't exactly a budget summit, but it sounded like an increase of L.A. Bridges Program was in order. So Mr. Graves and Mr. Chavez and the rest of the CDD family will have to deal with that at the proper time, but we know that this has a proven track record, and each one of you young people is a messenger for how successful, not only this program can be, but how successful this city can be. I'd like to recognize five other people who helped make this possible as well. Oh, and I want to say one thing about Braulio's speech as well. He said through the program, he learned to even play better basketball. So I was thinking, maybe Phil Jackson could talk to the Lakers and send them to L.A. Bridges for next year, and we'll get a championship. But that aside, sorry to bring that up. Like to ask Elba Salmorin to come forward, who works at El Centro del Pueblo in my own district, and give her this certificate in appreciation and gratitude from the L.A. Bridges Program for all that you have done. So much stuff with Virgil Middle School, which I'd like to give a shout out to as well, through your BANN meetings, BANN meetings, holiday celebrations, town hall meetings, field trips and fairs, and most of all, for your love and commitment and advocacy. Congratulations. Our second person to honor is Tessa Chernofsky, who's the Youth Program Manager at Hathaway Children and Family Services, which is in CD14, but I know serves Mr. Reyes's district, my own as well, and give her a certificate as well, and special recognition for her exemplary leadership and vision in delivering the L.A. Bridges Program. Her commitment, her genuine caring to those in need, and belief and practice of inclusive government in Highland Park is something that is changing one youth and one family at a time. So congratulations, Tessa, and thank you so much. Next, Linda Collins from the African-American Unity Center. Linda is another one of these L.A. Bridges champions, and we want to give her this certificate of appreciation for her tireless commitment to the youth and families of the L.A. Bridges Program at Horace Mann Middle School, and for her coordination of Peace in the Streets, March and Power Rally, which was held on April 24th of this year. Your hard work and dedication to community is a key factor for the success of this event and for the result that it made of renewing hope and light in our community. So congratulations, Linda. Thank you. Next, Jose Escada from Asian American Drug Abuse Program, AADAP. This is for eight years of continuous service. That's impressive. Eight years of continuous service with the L.A. Bridges Program. And his commitment and hard work to the Mount Vernon community has helped make it a safer place to live. It has empowered the lives of thousands of young people and their families. And a special thanks for organizing and making possible the Martin Luther King Day Essay Contest at Magic Mountain, for making it a success and such a memorable day for thousands of youth in the central and west regions of Los Angeles in the past six years. We thank you. The world is a better place indeed for the work that you have done. Thanks, Jose. And lastly, Maryam Ali from Community Build Inc. Give her a round of applause too, for her great work with the L.A. Bridges Program at Bret Hart Middle School. You serve for the youth and their families as the guiding light and inspire all of those around you to improve themselves, to cherish their families, and to build up their community. So on behalf of the city, we want to thank you as well today. And I'm supposed to announce to all the families, and you see in here, it's not just the young people, but it's the families that make it possible. We had both valedictorians speak earlier. We wanted to make sure that we recognize the families that are here as well, because they make this possible, and they make, through their tireless sacrifice, through their commitment, this graduation possible. So I'd like to invite all the graduates out. We're going to take a picture out in the courtyard together, and welcome to City Hall. We hope it's not your last visit. If it's your first, come back often. We look forward to seeing you, and congratulations to everybody again. One final presentation, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody. I'm the messenger for a couple departments today, the vehicle. We have a very special presentation. I'd like to invite Ms. Perry, if she wants to join me for this presentation as well. This is to highlight, and I know that we're going to be bringing them up as our L.A. Bridges graduates leave, but Ms. Perry, this is the Music Center Spotlight Awards Program. I don't know if you'd like to come, come join me. We are recognizing the annual achievements from the Music Center of the winners of this incredible Spotlight Award, which happens every single year. This was arranged at the recommendation, actually, of my father, who wanted to highlight Gregory Arkalian, who attends the Decranian School in Hollywood. And the Music Center, hearing about this, said, why don't we honor all of the Spotlight Award folks? So it's really an incredible occasion to see some of the best and brightest talent here in Los Angeles. The folks who put together this Spotlight Awards each year with the mission of creating a nurturing environment in which high school students can develop their skills and pursue their dreams as artists. We have a vice president of the education programs, the Music Center, Mark Slavkin, a familiar face and name to many of us, as well as Jerry Gale, who is the director of the Spotlight Awards. I want to congratulate all the folks today who have won these awards, who have inspired this city. We'll say a little bit more about them, but I want to first turn over to Ms. Perry, if she wanted to say a word, and then we'll hear from Mark and Jerry as well. she wanted to say a word, and then we'll hear from Mark and Jerry as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. I've had the pleasure of watching the trials for the Spotlight Awards last year and recognize one of the dancers who's about to be honored here today. But I just want to say a bit about the Music Center and the tremendous contribution that it makes to our entire city, not just in downtown Los Angeles or the Ninth Council District, but is now considered, with the addition of Disney Hall and the cathedral, to be a major international cultural asset that attracts tourists, not only locally and statewide, but internationally. And this is just one part of the number of incredible programs that the Music Center does to provide young people with opportunity and access, and provide a more significant linkage between the Music Center and our community. So, congratulations to all the honorees here today.
Ms. Perry and I, Mr. Slavkin isn't with us, but Ms. Gale is. So, on behalf of the city, let us first present this congratulations to her from Councilmember Perry. And we'd like to ask her to just say a couple of words as well about the meaning of these awards and some of the great recipients who we're honoring today.
Thank you very much. I'm taking up one second, because I think this has been going on way too long. I am so honored to be here. The Music Center is very honored to be represented here. Arts education, as we all know, is incredibly important to the youth of this city and the country and the nation, and probably the world. So, these are representatives of this incredible program that we have that honors young people in visual and performing arts with the Music Center. Thank you so much.
And very quickly, Mr. President, the folks that we are honoring here today, and I think one person disappeared.
One Victor Sniker.
Which one? Okay. First, Gregory Arkalian, who I mentioned before. He's 18, a senior at Arshag Ukrainian Armenian High School, and he is studying at Pasadena Dance Theater under the direction of Lawrence Blake and Cynthia Long. Attended the American Ballet Theater's Summer Intensive Program in Orange County last year, and is going to be, no, I should change that. He already is an incredible dancer, but is going to continue being that. And want to congratulate him on winning first place at the Los Angeles Music Center Spotlight Awards for this year. Gregory. Christopher Bowers is right here as well. He's 15, an honor roll sophomore at Los Angeles County High School of the Arts. And he received in 2003 the Outstanding Soloist Award at the Stanford Jazz Workshop, and won first place honors at the Beverly Hills Hollywood NAACP ACT-SONG, Georgia Lester NANM competitions. He has received recognitions from all over places, from organizations, churches, charitable groups. He studies at the Colburn School of Performing Arts, and he plans to attend Berklee School of Music for his master's in fine arts, to work towards his goal of becoming a professional jazz pianist. And I also play jazz piano, not anywhere near like you do, but it gives me great pride to be able to congratulate you, Christopher, on winning second place in Jazz Instrumental at the Los Angeles Music Center Spotlight Awards 2004. And Nicole, Nicole Haskins.
Shamrock.
Nope, Shamrock. I'm sorry, Nicole's not with us. Shamrock, come on up. Shamrock Clifton is 16, also at the Los Angeles County High School School for the Arts. She is a junior there. And she began ballet lessons with Steven Muksi? Muxi? Muxi. At the age of six, and currently studies Chinese dance with Shin Wang at the Shin Dance Academy. Her dance instruction has taken her to Beijing, the Vail International Dance Festival, and also recently to the American Ballet Theater's Summer Intensive. This past summer, she competed in Chengdu, China, at the Taoli Cup Competition, and she won the Outstanding Performance Award. And her dream is one day to dance with Alvin Ailey Dance Theater or the American Ballet. So, we'd like to congratulate her on winning second place in the Non-Classical Dance at the Los Angeles Music Center Spotlight Awards, and give a hand to Shamrock and to all of our award winners this year. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And colleagues, I think this concludes our presentation segment of today's agenda. Before returning to a couple of the items called special, we did have a special motion introduced today by Councilmember Missakowski. Let me recognize the city attorney on the findings.
Mr. President and members, before you, you have a motion from Councilmember Missakowski. In order for you to consider her motion, it is necessary, under the rules of the city council, as well as the California Government Code, that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and that the need for action came to the attention of the council subsequent to the posting of today's city council agenda.
Any discussion on the findings? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Special one now before us. Ms. Missakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. And members, one, I want to appreciate just your consideration to listen to this. This is a recommendation that we assert jurisdiction under our Charter, Section 245, which we rarely do. And I think when we do it, we should try to do it prudently and for a good reason. And what I'm here to tell you today is, this is regarding a contract and a contractor for a Prop F project, a fire station in my district. And it's been moving along swiftly, and we've got reasonably good bids, and a contract was awarded. But just yesterday, I received a letter, and I think that letter's been distributed to all of you, from the Carpenters and Contractors Union, raising a question, raising a question that at least in the less than 24 hours I received notice about this, I tried to get an answer to that question, and I could not get an answer to that question. It involves litigation, potentially, having involved this contractor in the past, and litigation issues which may have involved the employees of that company and things that I think we would not want to be sanctioning in this city. I don't know whether that is a fact. I don't know whether it's true, but it was, I could not ask, as I talked to members of the Board of Public Work, to members of our city attorney's office, to members of our CAO's office, to members of the CLA office, I could not get an answer to that question. For that reason, I'm bringing this in today to say we need to assert jurisdiction and find the answer to that question. We have 21 days. I'm not asking this to take an action to reject the bid today, just to assert jurisdiction. Mr. Smith has agreed. The motion says refer to public safety, since it was a fire station contract, but we'll refer jointly to public safety and public works and bring back a joint committee report, hopefully within 21 days and sooner, just to find out the answer to that question. The reason this is important, and I realize it has put some other things in question, is that this bidder has bid on other projects in the city. This bidder has done other projects in the city. I don't think there's any question about the effectiveness of the work of this bidder, but the issues raised relative to the litigation and the settlement involving issues that I think are paramount importance, we have to resolve. Hopefully, we will find an answer to them and can go forward and not jeopardize any of the other projects. But we should, we can't ignore it. And that's what I think I'm asking for the 10 votes today, to assert the jurisdictions, to find the answers to questions relative to litigation, relative to the practices, whether it was the contractor or subcontractor, we can find those answers. We need to find the answers before we move forward, not only with this project, but potentially others. So, let's, I appreciate an aye vote to assert that jurisdiction on this case so that we can deliberate.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's open the roll on Special One, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Item nine, which was called special and amending motion 9A, has been circulated.
Right. And don't believe there's a need for further discussion. 9A is a technical amendment that we can consider without objection. Let's open the roll on item nine, as amended, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that is approved. And I know we still have two other items called special remaining at the desk. I understand these can be dispensed with rather quickly. Ms. Perry?
Mr. President, I just needed to have item two on a special agenda reconsidered, so I can ask for it to go forthwith.
Okay, we can do that without reconsideration. Forthwith on item two of the special agenda. Let's go to the next item, please.
Item 12 is called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine.
On this item, it regards a building in the heart of Reseda that was built in 1948, and it was a theater. Unfortunately, it's been vacant for approximately 18 years. And you can imagine what happens to a commercial property that's been vacant, boarded up, and what it does to a community, to a neighborhood for 18 years. We've worked with the landowner, who has not been cooperative in making improvements to the facility, and we are working with the CRA. So, we would request that the CRA be granted the authority to move forward and to do what needs to be done for this deteriorating property that's a eyesore in the community. It's been cited numerous times dating back to 1980s. It's gone through a number of council representatives to try and do something with it, and we've basically reached the end of the road. So, the CRA has approved to move forward on it. We want to grant that and hopefully help revitalize Reseda, which is going through a revitalization with the great assistance of the CRA. And Leslie Lampert, the project manager, has been very committed to making this happen. So, I'd request a affirmative vote on this and a forthwith on the item number 12. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members listening to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item?
Item three was called special from the special meeting by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll be short, but here we go again. I've stood up every time in this council and brought this to the attention of the council. I think we saw in the recent debate over the rate increases at Water &amp; Power, that indeed, the continued payment of high salaries at Water &amp; Power continue to help drive rate increases at Water &amp; Power. And it's this council that continues to allow that to happen. I want to read into the record, so you understand what you're voting on today, a couple of things we're giving. We're giving a blended rate for over three years of a four and a half percent rate pay increase to people at Water &amp; Power, when everybody else in the city's been getting two to three percent. Let me repeat that. We're giving a blended rate of over three years retroactive pay raises of four and a half percent, when the rate of inflation in the city of LA in this region has been under three. Not in addition to that, we're giving a retirement factor increase to 2.3% for the entire time of service for people over 20 years of service to Water &amp; Power. That is not what we give the 32,000 employees of the city of LA. We give them 2.16%. We're giving Water &amp; Power 2.3%. We continue to give additional benefits, even though this council repeatedly said that is against the policy of this council. We want fiscal responsibility at Water &amp; Power. We're not getting it because you keep giving them these contracts that are not fair to the remaining employees of the city of LA, that are disadvantageous to us, because they keep stealing employees, because they can offer them better benefits, they can offer them higher pay, and we keep giving away the farm over there to the detriment of what we do here. And it's also, more importantly, continues to drive those rate increases that you folks have to go defend in your council districts from now on, for the next four or five years. Why do we continue to do this, folks? It is time to just say no to what's going on at Water &amp; Power with continued rate increases driven partially by salaries that are giving away the farm.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to belabor the point or get into a long debate on this, but Mr. Fujioka, if you could please approach a couple of questions on this, a number of people involved and the liability, if this is not made fair. As I understand, this is trying to put together a fairness package. And I understand Mr. Smith's concerns on it, but the 40 people, as I understand, are affected by this. It brings in a level of fairness to the people in that particular section. If you can please comment on that.
Yes, as far as the numbers, 40 is a correct number. And to give some of you a little history on this one particular item, this group was formerly represented by EAA. On January 14th of 2003, the EERC and subsequently your console approved, we made an offer, a last, best, and final offer, that was accepted by EAA, and again subsequently approved by a console, that every single EAA unit received. Around that same time, there's a decertification process going on. And the unit members, because of that decertification process, or the members associated with this unit, voted against ratifying the MOU. A lot of things happened, time passed. Now, this unit is being represented by IBW. What's before you today is a contract, and with that provisions in the contract that are identical to what was given to, accepted by, and then subsequently approved by this console, every EAA member in Water &amp; Power. This is a fairness issue. This is something that the EERC considered, recommended. Now, we're bringing to your console with the recommendation that we approve it. The one issue with respect to retirement, please understand that aside from fairness is also a legal issue, because every single person in Water &amp; Power currently receives this benefit. We can't carve out these 40 people. Anything else?
The cost, what is the estimated cost for the 40 individuals?
I don't have that in my hand right now, but it is. Do you have that? Did I miss it? Oh, I'm sorry.
Your able-bodied assistant, Royce, thank you.
It's approximately $334,000.
For how?
Is that, Royce, is that for the whole term of the contract? The three-year term?
That's for the three.
It's for the entire three-year term of the contract.
And if we don't approve this, then it gets into arbitration, unfair labor practice, litigation?
If we don't approve this, it probably will go through the processes you mentioned, and it'd be very difficult to defend it. When the day's over, we'd probably lose it. I think now's the time to just send this forward.
Okay. I would, I understand Councilmember Smith's concerns on that issue, but I think our obligation is to hold true to the fairness doctrine and to avoid litigation on it. We don't have much option then to approve it and go forward with it to the 40 people that are involved. And I remember when there was a decertification going on, it was a very confusing period of time for a lot of people. So, this will make everyone whole, including these 40 people in that department.
And again, this is for the period covering 2001 through 2003. This is not for future years.
Right.
This is for, as a retroactive, it's the same contract, everyone else received who are represented by EAA. This group is formerly represented by EAA, is now represented by IBW.
Okay. I would request an aye vote on that. Thank you.
Ms. Missakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I don't have a problem with this, but I do understand absolutely the passion that Mr. Smith brings to this, because Mr. Smith has raised this issue again and again. And every issue that we have, a amendment or a differential, we say, "Well, we have to do this because it's fair." And Mr. Smith never gets an answer, and the rest of us never get an answer. And I guess the question is, how do we get an answer? How do we create equity? And I think, members, let's say what we have to do. We have to say to Water &amp; Power, "You've gotten the cream over the years. You've gotten better. You've gotten more. We're going to have to hold the line or give you less as we create parity elsewhere." I don't know if we can even announce that or say that, because we have to bargain. They've got separate bargaining units. One bargain better sooner, more, whatever. But in recognition of that today, I mean, we've done it around here. We've said to certain employee groups, "We're going to give you a raise this year, last year, you're in multi-year contract." We've said to others, "You're not going to get a raise this year." So, we can and have done that. But, Mr. Smith, I guess the point is, your point of parity, or asking Mr. Fujioka for parity, is, do we hold the line? I don't think anyone would ever concede that we could never lower it. Do we hold the line? Well, and when others naturally get up to some degree of parity, we're not going to say raise it and then raise everybody else, too, because that's not budgetarily, fiscally wise. But what I hear you, and I hear each issue, "Well, this isn't the issue. This isn't the issue. This isn't the time." There's got to be a time, but we've got to have it clearly presented, clearly understood, and maybe through a meeting with EERC and bargaining instructions, you know, convey that in some way, because it isn't, it isn't healthy for the system, particularly as we see here. We had EAA, we had the IBW and the other DWP supervisory levels, same qualifications for jobs, getting paid differentially. So, of course, people are going to go over one to the other, and why not? Then they represent that bargaining unit, and their salaries go up. So, but that's the issue, and I hear you and I feel you, and I just, you know, I don't want to say that that's being ignored, but I think we ought to address it squarely, whether now or in the future, and ask Mr. Fujioka to come back and give us that outline through personnel and whatever, to really look at where we go, what we are setting in place for what we need to do if we want to commit to that principle. And I think we do, because I don't think, I don't know how we can really rationalize continuing something that's been in place for a while.
One quick clarification. This council in the EERC approved this deal. It was formally offered to this group. But because of what was going on with the representation and decertification process and decertification process and so on, this group decided not to ratify the MOU, but it was formally offered to them. And that's why, because of that note, and on that basis, I feel if we were to go through an arbitration or unfair practice, it would be difficult to defend.
Mr. Smith.
Well, to just close, I hope, I thank Ms. Miskowski for those comments, but I think that's what I've been trying to say to this council. I stood up here a year ago when we had the first group of 40 and said, don't do this. And then we had 14, then we had 24. Now here's another group of 40, and the explanation keeps being, well, we have to do it because we did it with that last group. Well, sometimes you've just got to draw the line, Mr. Zine. Fairness or not, we have to draw the line. I'm glad Ms. Miskowski outlined very succinctly what needs to be done. If it isn't this group, and I'm going to continue to vote for these because we shouldn't, we should have done this last year, but I'll continue to vote no on these, but we have to set a policy and instruct through EERC that it's time to draw the line. And this, I just got to point this out. Thank you for succinctly saying what I've been trying to say for a long time.
Mr. Zine to close?
Yeah, I understand, and I think that your point is well-taken. When it comes to negotiations for the full body, that has to be recognized. Again, these all come through EERC, and the recommendations come through there. The expense to go through litigation, through the unfair labor practice, through mediation, through all that, could be more than what we're talking about. And my focus is to make it fair. It's not fair at this time. This would make it fair. When we go into negotiations for all the bodies, which is going to happen shortly, EERC has to be cognizant of that and recognize that, and don't just carve these individuals out, but be fair with all of them, all departments and all personnel.
Okay. If there's no further speakers, let's proceed with the vote. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
That is approved. Mr. Garcetti.
11 goes forthwith, and I think there are a few folks who want to reconsider item 15, just to, since we're changing some of the rules of the city council, just to be able to talk a little bit about it.
We're forthwith on 11. Item 15 has not been approved today. It's been sort of heard, and it carries over for a week. The vote is scheduled for the 25th.
So next week? What day is it?
June 25th.
June 25th. Okay. And I believe this brings us to public comment. Ms. Miskowski?
Forthwith on 13.
Forthwith on 13 as well. And I believe, Mr. Clerk, if there's anything further, this brings us to public comment?
Public comment time.
Okay. And if we can put up a clock, please. Council calls forward Candido Maris, followed by Charles Duke Russell and Leonard Wayne Rose Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. On Tuesday, I came before you and said that I would go on a hunger strike until this council took action and made sure that our city workers were protected, and I want to thank this council for acting on that because I've been on that hunger strike for four days, and I'm glad to end it today because, again, that's the most important part. It's not about losing business or... It's about protecting those that work for us and that are doing a good job, and no matter what the issues are, sometimes the mistreatment of people can be worse than anything else. But I should have shut, I should shut my mouth now, but when I read an article and I hear that this council is criticized for standing up and criticizing the golden goose, and we all know who the golden goose is, you can't do that. That is your job. That is the obligation that you have to the people of this great city. So I ask you to continue to criticize, to question, because it has to be fair for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Russell, are you still here?
Mr. President, members of the board, members of the council, I want to thank you very much for the proclamation that you gave regarding getting rid of the golf driving range at L.A. City College. Tremendously encouraging to us. I'm here today to tell you what I learned yesterday. The beautiful stadium at L.A. City College will be destroyed in August. We understood that it was going to be destroyed in Thanksgiving holiday, but it's been moved up. I'm imploring for you to help us save that stadium for groups like L.A. Bridges. It's needed for high schools to play sports, and we just need to save the stadium. If we save the stadium, we can rebuild the sports field, and that'll be great for the city, obviously. The master plan at L.A. City College needs to be reexamined now that the president has retired. By simply building the science building where the golf range is, we will save the land for rebuilding the sports field. L.A. City College, this great college of this great city, could end up with two fields. So I do hope that you will help us do that. Football should return to that school. Football is at six of the nine L.A. community colleges. We know what football does. It prepares young men to go into the police departments, fire departments, rescue groups, the military. Football is essential. Two of your members played at LACC. So I do hope that you will help us in that way. For only $175,000, the athletic director over there told us that he would like to have football back there. I'm not here for football today. I'm here to save that great grandstand. The new high school in Hollywood being built needs a grandstand. They have a football field, they will have a football field, a soccer field, and softball field, a running track, but they won't have enough space for a grandstand. The school is only 10... I'm sorry. The school is only 10 minutes from L.A. City College. They need that grandstand. Other high schools have used that grandstand. This great city has got to help this great L.A. City College. Please, help.
Thank you very much, Mr. Russell. Next speaker is Leonard Wayne Rose Jr.
Leonard Wayne Rose here. I here to talk about youth learning activity center that need to be built in a park in the city of L.A., and we need to get like a game room, computer lab, study area, classroom, counseling office, TV library, teaching studio, and cable TV production and more. And we need to get a business area, and churches, and people get involved in the community, help with kids stay out of trouble, and the recreation aid, a recreation specialist apply at the city hall, and we need to get volunteer here, and people get paid for it. And some people write a letter to George Bush and different senator Bob Boxer, Dan Feinstein, and a state seminary, and governor on the associationator, support this, and county board supervisor. This help with kids stay away from gangs and all these bad activity influences and bad influence for kids, but this help build our youth center for kids doing sports and homeworks and different program. And a parent will pick up their kids at the program, and we need to get involved, do something for the community. And Victory Outreach, I give her number and the website to contact, VictoryOutreach.org, and help with kids that stay away from gangs and activity drugs.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rose.
Thank you for serving your community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bill Zving-Zieh, Zieh, to be followed by Sarah Cook and Daniel Wang. Would you like to come forward, please? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Bill Zieh, a local Falangong practitioner. Falangong is also known as Falangdafa, ancient mind-body practice involving gentle, slow-moving exercises, seated meditation, and character improvement. In just over a decade since its public introduction in China in 1992, more than 100 million people in at least 60 countries have taken up their practice, mostly known of it through word of mouth. They are from all age, groups, war walks of life, and many diverse cultural and ethnic backgrounds. On behalf of the local Falangdafa practitioners, we would like to thank the mayor and the city council for providing us the opportunity to have a grand parade from the city hall through Chinatown on February 29th, 2004. We also thank you Councilman Bolad Parks for congratulating us on the celebration of World Falangdafa Day on May 13th, 2004 on the south lawn of city hall.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zieh. If I can ask you to wrap your comments up, please.
Since the persecution of Falangong in China began in 1999, the Falangdafa Information Center has verified the details of 982 deaths. Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, and the Youth State Department have reported arbitrary arrests, unlawful imprisonment, and the torture of hundreds of thousands of Falangong practitioners, as well as their execution in large numbers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zieh. We can have you continue on Ms. Cook's or Mr. Wang's time, or else I can ask them to come forward because of the time limit that we have. Okay?
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Sarah Cook and Daniel Wang, thank you for your understanding.
My name is Sarah Cook, and due to the shortness of time, I'll just let Daniel Wang speak first, and if there's any more time left, then I'll speak myself.
Thank you. Mr. Wang?
Good morning, council members. My name is Daniel Wang, and I'm a local Falangong practitioner. First, I'd like to thank the city for your support of our Falangong events in the city of Los Angeles. Today, I'm also here to talk about how the Chinese consulate at 443 Chateau Place in Los Angeles has interfered with our right and with our rights to peacefully appeal in front of the Chinese consulate. For the past three years, Falangong practitioners in Los Angeles have been going regularly to the Chinese consulate to peacefully appeal the escalating persecution and genocide being carried out against Falangong in China. However, in about two years ago, that's one year after we started going to the consulate to appeal, the Chinese consulate removed the grass area and planted bushes in front of the consulate. So pushed us away from the area, so we have to sit beside the consulate to appeal. Again, this year, on April 10th, the Chinese consulate planted bushes again on the remaining patch of grass in front of the consulate, thus completely removing the area that Falangong practitioners have been using to conduct their appeals. By planting the bushes, the Chinese consulate has interfered with our rights to freedom of expression, freedom of assembly, and our right to peacefully appeal. The city inspector told us that no permits were obtained for their planting the bushes and removing the grass twice.
I can ask you to conclude as well, Mr. Wang?
So we hope to meet with the council members to discuss how we may continue as we have done in the past three years. And we also have a request to remove the illegally planted bushes and a restoration of the parkway to a flat, long area so we can continue to peacefully appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Wang.
Thank you.
That is your time. I think Mr. LeBons wanted to say something, but we'll hold that for a moment. I'd like to call Sylvia Lynn Hawkins forward, please. Ms. Hawkins?
Good morning, everybody, in Jesus' name. I would like to say Happy Father's Day to everyone, especially my father, ex-president John F. Kennedy. And again, I would like to say, concerning the salary and the hiring of Department of Water &amp; Power, at this time, I believe that we must be qualified people with less practice and education needed to get the job done in a timely manner. I would say no on this oppose or appeal. We are overqualified ourselves for large companies when in two-year junior college is all that is needed. I believe we should start off with $8 up, 24 hours a day workers, 6 to 8 hours a day. We know we can't retire with Department of Water &amp; Power because we are not hired as long. No benefits is needed even if they receive this raise because of high prices to our customers and because of Medicare reform and medicine. Workers can't afford all the state these benefits. Pills and drugs costs is out of reach at this time, and it's less value in healing the people because of the location of the pill delivered from unwanted states.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins. If I can ask you to finish up your comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Happy Father's Day.
Thank you very much. Next group of speakers are South Central Farmers, Vicente Cuara, Epidio Leon, Edionis Luyanos Rumus, Luis Morales Fraile, Jesus Esparsa Marcias, and Miguel Angel Public today.
Councilpeople.
Presidente municipal. Venimos a luchar para que los den esas tierras.
We came to ask to leave us those lands.
Como campesinos que somos.
As farm workers that we are.
Si no las quitan, los quitan la mitad de la vida.
If they take them away, they keep, they take away half of our lives.
Y andamos luchando para ayudar a la gente económicamente.
And we are fighting to help people economically.
Para que haya alimentación para los niños y los señores grandes.
So there's food for children and older people.
Y por eso señor presidente y concejales, apoyenlos y también nosotros los campesinos los apoyaremos.
And that's why, Mr. President, councilpeople support us, and that's how we're going to support you also.
Y ahora quiero mandar un mensaje para todos los papás del mundo que les den estudio a los niños.
I want to send a message to all the fathers of the world to give school to all the children.
Porque si no, se van a ir a la calle a hacer perjuicios que no deben de hacerlo.
If not, they're going to go onto the streets to do damages they're not supposed to be doing.
Y say señor presidente y concejales muchas gracias.
And, Mr. President and councilpeople, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Real quick.
And I neglected to say, Nidian Diaz is part of this.
Yeah, real quick. Miguel Angel Perez, Los Angeles Coalition, again, standing in support of the South Central Farmers. We'd like to extend an invitation to all of you in the city of Los Angeles and all residents. This Saturday and Sunday, we are celebrating a farmer's market. You are all invited. Again, also, on Sunday, we are celebrating Human Day. Not only that it's a Father's Day here in the United States, but within the world, in Mexico, it's always a Father's Day, a Mother's Day, and a Children's Day. It is a day that is celebrating for something that is very important that we celebrate on a daily basis. Behind me, I've been asked by the elders of the South Central Farmers, which are right here, representative of over 400 working years of the land, to ask and to invite all of you to participate with us, to enjoy the foods and the cornucopia of the food that is grown there on a daily basis. Aquí estamos y no nos vamos. Tierra libertad. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gracias por su testimonio. Our final public speaker card will be Mr. Robert Gutierrez. We had item 10 and 11 before, since there had been a public hearing, there's not one required here, but for public comment, that may be a good way to express your thoughts.
First of all, Councilman Garcetti, I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the council, and I know there was an opportunity to have public comment at the Housing Community Economic Development Committee as well as the Personnel Committee. Oh, they already stood up. We brought a number of staff and representatives from different agencies and young people. Hopefully, we were hoping to have one final opportunity to make a pitch to the city council and let them know that we're not happy with the Community Development Department recommendations that were approved by the Workforce Investment Board. There are two key issues. The first is... The first is, after nearly serving the east area, which moves into the central area, for nearly 40 years, we were not recommended for funding, and the funding was given to an agency that has no performance track record. And I submitted, as you know, a proposal for the department to give up some of its, the 33% that it's keeping, and apply that to shore up the dramatic cuts that were made in the east and the west, though it's only 3% out of 33% of their budget. In my opinion, one-third of the pie is too high. That's far too much money that's being kept by the department instead of being allocated for direct services to needy young people in the city of Los Angeles. And you've already voted on it, so I hope to see you in 60 days. Is that the deal? All right, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here today and for your patience in this matter, too. Thank you. Thank you very much. That closes our public comment period for today. Go to the next piece of the agenda.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, those are posted and referred?
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused Tuesday, June 29 for city business, meets council policy.
Okay. Mr. Padilla is excused?
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Tuesday, June 22 for city business. That also meets council policy.
I guess he's excused, too.
That does clear the desk, Mr. President.
All right. Announcements, colleagues? Mr. Zine, I'll work backwards. Mr. Zine, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Berry.
All right, here we go. Going backwards for once. The, I've been asked to announce this for Council District Six, Tony Cardenas, and it's the 29th Annual Great American Irish Fair and Musical Festival, June 19th and 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Woodley Park in the Sepulveda Basin, 6335 Woodley Avenue in Van Nuys. The 29th Annual Great American Irish Fair and Musical Festival will preserve and promote a greater cultural awareness of the Irish and Irish-American community in the greater Los Angeles area. The event will feature a parade, bagpipes, Irish dance, food, sports, theater, special shows, shopping, and will attract over 30,000 visitors throughout this weekend. Parking is available, and shuttles will be provided. That's June 19th and 20th, 29th Annual Great American Irish Fair Musical Festival at Woodley Park in Council District Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Ms. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Couple of announcements, colleagues. First of all, I want to recognize a historic occasion happening this weekend in the city of Los Angeles at Dodger Stadium. The Yankees are in town for the first regular-season matchup between the Yankees and the Dodgers. We've seen them play against each other plenty of times in World Series, but this is the first time the Yankees are visiting Los Angeles during the regular season. I hope you all get a chance to get out there. But coming back now to Council District Seven tomorrow morning at 10:30, we are dedicating some new soccer fields in the Hanson Dam area. 10:30, we have a lot of special activities planned, and what makes these soccer fields unique, number one, they were funded in large part by the state government when times were good in Sacramento, but the community, because of the diversity in interest and uses, is actually a multipurpose fields. You can actually see polo being played on many mornings out at Hanson Dam, and the horses make way for some soccer games in the afternoon, and so I think it's just a wonderful example of the diverse communities throughout Los Angeles, the diverse interests of the people of Los Angeles, and here people are getting along, utilizing and maximizing the use of these brand-new facilities. So for those people who are interested, come on out tomorrow morning, 10:30, Hanson Dam.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to bring the attention of the council and those listening that I just received a fax from Sacramento from the State Water Quality Resources Board denying the request for an appeal of Sunshine Canyon BFI landfill on the double-liner issue, which I want to thank this council for their support. I think it's a big victory for the people of San Fernando Valley, in particular Granada Hills, that the state water board wouldn't even hear the appeal because it had no basis whatsoever. So thank you very much, and congratulations to the council for, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and then Ms. Berry.
Thank you, Council President. We have this weekend, tomorrow at 2:00 in MacArthur Park, the passing of the Pops. I would like to thank Mayor Hahn, he'll be attending. We'll have Chief Bratton, be the first time, I can't say it since when, have a multi-piece, like hundreds of singers, multi-orchestra pieces, it's going to be great. I'd like to invite you, it's free, starts at 2:00, MacArthur Park. I also want to thank Council President Padilla for making us aware that at Dodgers, we will have the Yankees. This is an inter-league game, first time that it actually counts. We usually play the Yankees pre-season. So last week, we played the Red Sox, this week we played the Yankees. Red Sox, first time in 88 years, so let's enjoy.
Ms. Berry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I want to make two announcements. One is about our very good friend, Mr. Nate Holden, whose birthday will be observed this evening at 6:30 p.m. at the restaurant called Chosun Gaibi Restaurant, located at 3330 West Olympic Boulevard, at the corner of Olympic Boulevard and Blaine Street. And the next announcement is on behalf of myself, the Department of Public Works, and the Southeast Empowerment Congress Neighborhood Council, and I hope Mrs. McClellan is listening so that she doesn't send me a five-page email later, because I did mention her name. We want you to come to a community meeting for the Manchester Streetscape Project Tuesday, June 22, 2004, 6:00 p.m. at the Manchester Streetscape Community Meeting located at 330 East 93rd Street. If you have questions, call CD9 at 473-7009. Thank you.
Are there announcements, colleagues? Mr. Labange?
Mr. President, Mr. Rhodes Scholar, what happens Monday? Five, four, three. Very good. This is the, not the Rhodes Scholar, but the Councilwoman of the 15th District, the summer solstice. Summer begins on the 21st of June, so we want to make sure everybody is aware of that. And we're having a big hike in Griffith Park at 5:30 in the evening. The public is invited, just park along Vermont Canyon Road, up near the Greek Theater, or up at the Observatory, hike up to Mount Hollywood. We're saluting our sister cities, all 20 of them, and also the council corps from throughout Los Angeles. It's a wonderful, nice hike, about a mile and a half. Everyone, all public, is invited to attend. And also, to add to the affairs tomorrow in Los Angeles, at high noon, when the New York Yankees come all the way west there, a great constituent of my district was celebrating his birthday, and we want to wish Joe Sorel birthday greetings, a great constituent of the 4th District, as he celebrates to see the Yankees play the Dodgers, which they've been there before, though. You know that, don't you? Yeah, right, okay, I want to make sure there, I want to make sure. I was, I was looking for the, for someone else to kid him on that. No more quizzes. Now I've got to turn it over to the great Councilwoman of the 15th District, Janice Hahn.
I think one other announcement, but we appreciate you turning it over to her, Mr. Labange?
Nothing going on down there. Eric.
One, one quick announcement, then Mr. Zine has one other. In Council District 13, we'll be having our Neighborhood Council Summit tomorrow morning, meet at Mitchell Torino School at 9:00 a.m. We'll be getting, bring together all the neighborhood councils to discuss issues of common concern, and at the end of that, we'll be having Chief Bratton come at 1:00 p.m. before he goes to MacArthur Park. He will be coming to launch, the official launching of Untag, our anti-graffiti initiative, and to make some announcements about progress that we have made with so many community volunteers in CD 13 to try to stamp out graffiti. Mr. Zine?
I've got one more. I failed to mention the queen of Reseda, Ann Kinzel, but Frank Bush, our principal bill inspector, looking at him reminded me of the Reseda Street Fair that's going to take place in Reseda on Sherman Way, so everyone's invited. There's going to be a car show, a nice street fair, Reseda and Lindley, right in the heart of Reseda, and we'll be there Sunday for that activity. So thank you, Frank Bush, for reminding me of that with your mere presence here in city council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any adjourning tributes? Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I would like us to, I would like us to adjourn our meeting today in memory of David Gilman. This was a very tragic accident. David is a San Pedro teenager who died Sunday evening when he drowned while he was scuba diving with his father, right off of the Rancho Palisverdes coast, near the old marine land site. He'd become a certified scuba diver a few weeks ago, and he and his father Barry were diving about 50 yards out when apparently water entered his mask, and he sort of panicked, and unfortunately was not able to survive. He's a student at the San Pedro High School Police Magnet School, and many people talk about how he was transformed from a shy, quiet student to a very talkative comedian admired by his teachers, and he will be remembered tonight at a service at Hope Chapel at 7:00 tonight that's going to be geared for the teenagers of the community, and a funeral service will follow tomorrow at 3:00 p.m. at Hope Chapel on 9th Street. He's survived by his father and mother. Mentioned his father Barry, his mother Diane, his older sister Annie and Michelle, and his grandparents Darwin and Shirley Horn and Ann Gilman. Darwin and Shirley Horn, his grandparents, were good friends of my parents, and actually went to Pepperdine together, where Darwin actually played football when Pepperdine had a football team, and went on to become a member of the Secret Service. So his family is intertwined with my family, but it is such a sad, sad tragedy. 15 years old, had his whole life ahead of him, so I would ask that we adjourn our meeting in his memory today.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Any other tributes, colleagues? We lost quorum, so we will, we will make sure that gets submitted on Tuesdays, an official adjourning motion, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.